Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the October 6th meeting of council, committee, and committee council and committee of the whole. Mayor Hamlin is in Japan for the sister city delegation right now, so I'm chairing, and councillor Baines is joining us remotely. He's not feeling great, and he'd rather not give it to us. So, the first course of business will be to ask everyone to please stand as we play our national anthem. Thank you. So, Clerk Amos can cross her fingers. That's great, thank you. I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask if councillor Jeffrey would please do the land acknowledgement.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. For more than 15,000 years, the First Nations walked upon and cared for the lands we now call home. Anishinaabe, Haudenosaunee, Ojibwe, and many others who were families, friends, and communities the way we are today. The town of Collingwood acknowledges the Lake Simcoe-Narwhasaugah Treaty of 1818 and the relationship it establishes with the original inhabitants of Turtle Island. We acknowledge the reality of our shared history and the current contributions of indigenous people within our community. We seek to continue empowering expressions of pride amongst all of the diverse stakeholders in this area. We seek to do better and to continue to recognize, learn, and grow in friendship and community nation to nation.
Okay, and the next item is the adoption of the agenda. And the recommendation is that the content of the council committee of the whole agenda for October 6, 2025 be adopted as amended. It includes the addition of the staff report for item 7.1, which is P 2025-23, and that's development approvals process and fees review, and it's the proposed update to building fees. And we have removed the, from 11.4, the Raglan Street sidewalk update. One other addition is, under old business, councillor Potts would like to ask about the progress on the Veterans Way situation. So, that all being said, I would ask for a mover to accept the adoption of the agenda, and that's councillor Jeffrey, and seconded by councillor Potts, and all those in favor? And that, and there's, I saw your card councillor Baines, so that's unanimous. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Councillor Doherty?
Thank you, Chair. I will declare a conflict of interest with regard to item 15.2.1, as I am a director of the Blue Mountain Watershed Trust Foundation, which has taken party status at the OLT hearing for the Huntingwood Trails East lands, also by the same proponent.
Okay, so noted, and I also have a request from councillor Baines to speak. Go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for the exact same reasons as described by my colleague councillor Doherty. I too wish to withdraw from any discussions in this topic, because I too am a board member of the Blue Mountain Watershed Trust, and for the same reasons will declare a conflict. Thank you.
And that's so noted as well, and if anyone else has anything come up during the meeting, you can certainly just speak up, and we will record that. So, we'll move on from there, and we'll go to community announcements, and move first to councillor Jeffrey.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Friar. Just three tonight, really enjoyed celebrating with all of the Collingwood and District Special Olympic athletes, coaches, and volunteers, another very successful season, and it was just appropriate going into Thanksgiving and the season to be thankful for all those that support the Special Olympic athletes, and also recognizing many of their longstanding volunteers, most notably Sue Diggins and Patti Federer. And then moved from that right to the Collingwood Climate Action Team's fundraiser, the trivia night, and participated with the council team headed up by the deputy mayor, and included councillor Perry, councillor Ring, myself, councillor Baines, I think that was it, and another stellar performance by your council team. We medaled two years in a row, and we were one and a half points out of gold, but we medaled with bronze again. And then, just to let the community know that Hockey Battles Cancer, the project by the Collingwood Blues, has just received its second order of 42 chemotherapy care gift oats for patients, cancer patients going through treatment, and we have them available again, so you just need to let me or someone on the Blues Board know, and we're happy to get them to the patients. So, that's it for me. Thank you.
Councillor Doherty?
Thank you. I just wanted to express how delightful our art crawl was last weekend, and I congratulate both the BIA and the participating artists and the foundation for such a well-executed event as usual, and it's just incredible to me how the weather always holds for that particular evening, well, afternoon and evening, so well done all. Thank you.
Yes, it was very good. Councillor Potts?
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. One announcement from the BIA. Celebrate Thanksgiving weekend with the annual art chair auction at Collingwood's final farmer's market. Downtown Collingwood celebrates Thanksgiving weekend as we enjoy the bounty of the harvest at our last farmer's market of the season, featuring the much anticipated art chair auction. Join us Saturday, October 11, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the park area across from Town Hall for your chance to purchase one of the much coveted art chairs. Once again, these chairs have been the talk of the town, and we have enjoyed them on the streets of Collingwood, historic downtown throughout the summer. Silent auction bidding will begin at 10:00 a.m. and will close at 1:00 p.m. sharp. Proceeds from this annual auction will be devoted to downtown's continuing support of our arts community, and will assist in increasing public art installations. Whether you're hunting for a unique piece to brighten your porch or garden, or simply want to be part of a beloved local tradition, this auction is not to be missed. Come for the chairs, stay for the atmosphere, and leave with a piece of Collingwood creativity. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, and councillor Ring?
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Friar. On Friday night, I had the pleasure of attending at the Simcoe Street Theatre. Affordable Housing hosted another very successful Collingwood Talks Housing Community Conversation event. This event was the premiering of the film screening of Thinking Beyond the Market, a film about genuinely affordable housing. This film was produced by filmmaker-professor Dr Brian Doucette of the University of Waterloo. I don't want to speak for anyone else, but it was a must-see film that helps find the answers, or hopes to find the answers to addressing the affordable housing crisis that not only we are experiencing in Collingwood, but across the country. At the end, there was a very informative Q&amp;A session that preceded the film, and it was very well-received by everybody in attendance. Then on Saturday afternoon, Deputy Mayor Friar and myself attended the Hockey Mill Grand opening on Saturday, and this is a fitness and training facility for all hockey enthusiasts, regardless of your gender or age. They have everything for everybody. I have a good feeling this new sports facility will be very well-received, and it was well-attended by everybody there, that were there on that day, and I could see a lot of the local hockey teams going down there to do some training. So, good luck to them in the future, and that's all I have.
And of course, you have not an awful lot of knowledge about hockey, so anyway, so moving forward to councillor Baines, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Tomorrow is an important day in Collingwood. Not only is it Tuesday, October 7, but it's also the day when tickets go on sale for the ever-popular, always-sold-out Haunted Tour with Dean Holland. Evening guided tours will be offered for Friday, October 24, Wednesday, October 29, and Thursday, October 30 at 7:00. The two-kilometer walking loop will begin and end at the Collingwood Museum, and take approximately an hour and a half. Limited tickets, and they always sell out, are available as of tomorrow for $16.95 plus a small service fee, and can be purchased through the Collingwood Museum's website, or by contacting the museum itself, or even better, going into the museum and buying your ticket. It's an enjoyable evening, so by all means, participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Perry?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. On Sunday, from 2 to 5 p.m., members of the Collingwood Off-Road Cycling Club organized the first fundraiser event for Phase 2 of the pump track on Ontario Street, and councillor Potts and I were thrilled to attend. There were over 150 children and adults, local sponsors, including every bike shop in town, that came out to support with donation games and prizes. Food vendors and a DJ helped to put on the show that engaged all bikers and skaters and scooter riders that helped raise $2,000 on top of the $10,000 that the Collingwood Off-Road Cycling Club is donating to Phase 2 of the pump track. The fundraising goal is $200,000, and the total projected budget for the Phase 2 of
The first is from October 6th to the 10th, the town of Collingwood is celebrating Customer Service Appreciation Week. This week is all about shining a spotlight on our dedicated staff who go above and beyond to serve our community every day. We have a full week of appreciation, learning and inspiration planned, including in-case and self-study training, spotlight speaker session with an inspiring guest, daily surprises and staff recognition opportunities. I'd like to, on behalf of council, take a moment to give special recognition to service Collingwood, our frontline team who greet, guide and support residents and visitors every day. Their professionalism, patience and dedication set the tone for excellent customer service across the organization. And of course, thank you to all of town staff. We deliver, who deliver outstanding service to the public daily. You work, your work helps make Collingwood a welcoming and responsive community. And I'll also add just an appreciation for our little gift in recognition of the customer service council make, and we do appreciate the recognition from staff in that regard. Moving on to Order of Collingwood nominations are now open. The Order of Collingwood has honored individuals since 1983 for outstanding volunteerism that enhances the social, cultural, natural and recreational life of Collingwood. The companion of the Order of Collingwood was introduced in 2003 to recognize past recipients who continue to significantly contribute to the community. The nomination period is open from Monday, October 6th to Friday, November 7th at 4:30 p.m. You can submit your nomination via email, in person, or via our online web form. And to learn more information about, including nominee eligibility and requirements, please visit www.collingwood.ca/Order. And I also just wanted to add that September is always a busy month and I think I had at least a dozen events over the, of course, I'm not going to go into each one, but I was thinking along the lines of it is Thanksgiving coming up and being thankful. And what I wanted to say in reflection is that council recognizes how lucky we are to have such an engaging and caring community. I visited Common Thread on their opening day, the newly-formed nonprofit community-powered thrift store that will provide much-needed support for my friend's house. I presented certificates of gratitude to Collingwood's Leah Denbok and Willie Bonet in appreciation of their tireless efforts to recognize that our homeless are people that all of us need to support. I provided congratulations to Collingwood today's 2025 Community Awards recipients for their ongoing efforts. Then yesterday, attended to thank, to thank the organizers of the Collingwood Pump Track fundraiser. It is just so appreciated that those stakeholders of that track are raising funds that will be used to assist council in getting the Phase Two track project done sooner. They actually will be updating us during the budget process and how they're making out in that regard. And then, as already actually mentioned, we had those two excellent sessions of our hard-working Affordable Housing Task Force organization. And so I just wanted to say, take the opportunity today to say how much council appreciates our caring community's assistance. So with those announcements, we'll move on to the next item. And it is a public meeting. Oh, I'm sorry. Go right ahead, Counselor.
Sorry, Deputy Mayor. My bad. I neglected to comment that Counselor Potts and I were able to also receive on behalf of Special Olympics a plaque of appreciation to council for the proceeds from the mayor's tournament. So they were very appreciative of that and I will make sure that plaque gets to Town Hall sooner than later. Thank you.
That is excellent. Another example of just what quality we have in the community. So on to item seven, and that's the public meeting. And I will welcome everyone to Collingwood's public meeting to consider proposed changes to the town's planning, building and development engineering fees as outlined in staff reports P 2025-23 and P 2025-24. No decisions will be made today. The purpose of this meeting is to provide information and allow the public an opportunity to provide comments on the proposed changes to the planning, building and development engineering fees. The meeting will begin with a presentation by staff. Members of the public will then be invited to offer their comments or questions. Once the public portion of the meeting has been completed, no more public comments or questions will be allowed. I will then ask council members if they have any questions. Once all public and council questions and comments have been received, staff will have an opportunity to respond to provide clarification if appropriate. Questions and comments related to the proposed fees will be addressed through amendments to the applicable staff reports in the future. It is very important that the town of Collingwood receive the correct names, email addresses and mailing addresses of individuals having an interest in this matter. If you plan to speak to council at this meeting, or if you want to be notified of any future council or committee meetings when this matter will be considered, you must provide this information. Public comment and feedback are important to the town of Collingwood and are a core part of a transparent and inclusive municipal process. We encourage you to express comments verbally or in writing. This meeting is being recorded and streamed on the municipal YouTube channel. Your name, address, comments and any other personal information are being recorded according to the Municipal Act and the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. The minutes will be available to the general public on the town's website. I will ask that staff also confirm that notification to the public has been given as required by the applicable provincial legislation within their presentation today. Again, I would like to remind everyone that no decision will be made today. A decision regarding the proposed planning, building and engineering, development engineering fees will be made by council on a future date. And I will now turn it over to Manager Ayers to begin the staff presentation. Thank you. And welcome.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and good afternoon, council staff and members of the public. My name is Lindsay Ayers and I am the manager of planning for the town. Also with me to present today are Chief Building Official and Manager of Building Tammy Hogg and the Manager of Development Engineering Amber Leal. Today's public meeting is legislated under the Building Code Act and is required as part of the town's public process. The purpose of today's meeting is to provide an overview of the proposed changes to the planning, building and development engineering fees per the town's recent comprehensive development approvals process and fees review, and to provide the public an opportunity to ask questions and provide comments to help inform future decision-making. Next slide, please. Today's meeting will follow the town's standard public meeting format. Since the deputy mayor has already provided an introduction, the remainder of the meeting will consist of confirmation of public notice, an overview of the development approvals process fees review, an overview of the proposed changes to the planning, building and development engineering fees. And then the meeting will be open to receive questions and comments from both the public and members of council. We will attempt to address any questions that we are able to today. Alternatively, anything that cannot be answered will be addressed in the future amended staff reports. Next slide, please. A notice of public meeting, including the proposed planning, building and development engineering fees, was published in the Collingwood Today Online Newspaper on September 10th of this year. The notice was also posted on the town's News and Notices webpage, included in two Development Community News Updates, electronic newsletters, and emailed directly to the Georgian Triangle Development Institute. I would also note that staff reports P 2025-23 and P 2025-24 were published on today's Committee of the Whole Agenda to provide background context regarding the proposed fees. Next slide, please. The development approvals process, also known as DAP, and fees review responded to the municipal priority to streamline the development review and approval system and to right-size fees in a context of increasing volumes and complexity of applications, as well as a constantly-changing legislative environment. In 2023, the town embarked on a two-phased and highly consultative approach to the project, including more than 20 engagement sessions with a range of town staff, the local development industry, partner agencies and members of council. The final reports were endorsed by council in the spring of 2024. Next slide, please. The resulting products that were endorsed by council as a roadmap to improving the DAP system were based on lean and SWOT approaches, with two reports containing nearly 50 recommendations. The reports also yielded a future state process maps to guide implementation and a series of fee-related recommendations stemming from an activity-based costing model, the concept of growth pays for growth, and a capacity analysis. The consultants leading the DAP review recommended an aggressive three-year implementation program, pending adequate funding and staff resources. Total funding determined to be required to act upon all of the recommendations was estimated at $150,000. At this time, we are currently in year two of implementation. Next slide, please. So the first phase of the project focused on process, with the key outcomes including system-wide streamlining, focusing on technology, increasing delegated authority and collaboration, improved role definition and the development of KPIs, among others. The second phase of the project, which is why we are here today, focused on fees, with the core outcomes including cost recovery, defensibility and comparability, and updated documents and processes. Next slide, please. Staff have taken the approach of introducing the proposed fees for all three divisions that drive growth and development at the same time to provide members of the public and the development community with a comprehensive picture of all of the proposed changes. The consultant's Phase Two final report was used as a baseline for the proposed fee changes, with mitigating factors and other considerations taken into account. Next slide, please. Since the DAP fees review was completed, there have been subsequent provincial legislative changes, most notably the introduction of Bill 185, the Cutting Red Tape to Build More Homes Act, which essentially repealed the Planning Act requirements introduced under Bill 109 that required municipalities to refund fees on an increasing scale to applicants who did not receive a decision on certain planning applications within the statutory timelines. And it removed the statutory authority under the Planning Act for council to require pre-application consultation before the submission of a formal planning application, essentially rendering pre-consultation a voluntary exercise. These legislative changes have impacted some of the recommendations contained in the consultant's Phase Two final report, particularly those based on Bill 109 process adaptations with respect to mandated provincial timeframes and associated fee refunds, and the creation of a rigorous front-end pre-consultation and technical review process. It is also important to note that, to date, a number of the DAP recommendations have been implemented or are substantially underway and anticipated to be completed in 2025, including optimization of the CityView workflows and tracking tool, expanded delegated authority to staff, introduction of sunset clauses and conditional approvals, updated planning application forms, standardized comments and conditions, restructured contingency deposits model, and standardized templates, among others. The efforts to improve processes have shown that the town is on a clear path to improving the experience for customers, reducing timelines and ultimately resulting in cost savings for applicants. While any proposed fee increases are not justified simply through augmented streamlining, they are based on an efforts analysis and comparator exercise, staff felt it was important to concurrently demonstrate the town's commitment to system-wide improvement so that the development community and public see that they are receiving value for the fees paid. The proposed planning fees before you today considered the recommendations from the consultant's Phase Two final report, including recognizing the community benefits of growth while still upholding the core tenet of growth pays for growth. Staff are cognizant of the provincial mandate to expeditiously increase housing supply to address the continued housing crisis and understand that the proposed fee increases can be perceived as counteractive to such efforts, particularly given current economic conditions. In this context, staff feel that we have applied a balanced and reasonable approach to the proposed planning fee updates, as further illustrated on the next slide. Next slide, please. It is important to note that until the DAP fees review was completed in 2024, a comprehensive concurrent review of development processes and fees had never been undertaken by the town. Furthermore, the town has not undertaken a comprehensive review and update to its DAP fees for at least 15 years, if ever. This is reflected in the peer municipal comparisons identified in the consultant's Phase Two report and has resulted in a high degree of taxpayer subsidization compared to our current municipal peers over the years. It is standard practice for Ontario municipalities to acknowledge that development carries benefits to both the existing community as well as the applicant or property owner. DAP fees are often discounted to 75% to 80% of the full cost recovery in recognition of these community benefits, with the resulting 20% to 25% funding gap covered by property tax revenues. The DAP consultant's recommendations included a mixture of full, or 100%, and 75% cost recovery fees, depending on the type of planning application. In applying a balanced and consistent approach, staff are proposing a 25% community benefit discount be applied to all planning fees. Staff calculations have estimated that the current cost recovery for planning fees is approximately 29%, noting this estimate is subject to variation and dependent on each application type. The proposed fee structure would shift the town toward a 75% cost recovery of the effort required to process and review development applications, which would significantly reduce reliance on property tax subsidies. The consultant's Phase Two final report identified that updated DAP fees could be secured immediately, or fee adjustments could be phased in over a finite transition period, with the DAP consultants recommending a three-year, 50%, 25%, 25% split transition. Given current economic and market conditions facing the development industry, staff are proposing the planning fees be phased in over a four-year period, beginning in 2026, with a 25% increase each year. Further, the planning fees that are proposed to decrease would be fully implemented in 2026 with a phased in, without a phased-in downward adjustment. With respect to pre-consultation, the DAP review recommended the creation of a rigorous front-end pre-consultation and technical review process. However, as I previously noted, subsequent provincial legislative changes have removed the authority for municipalities to require pre-consultation. Town staff and the development community recognize the value of pre-consultation and staff have continued to encourage applicants to pre-consult with the municipality before filing formal, formal planning applications. As a result, staff are of the opinion that the consultant's recommended fee is too high, but recognize that the current town fee is too low for the amount of technical review involved. Based on additional research, staff are proposing that the pre-consultation fee be set to approximately 50% of the DAP consultant's recommended fee, of which the full amount is proposed to be credited to the future planning application, provided the application is submitted within one year of the pre-consultation comments being issued. This proposed credit would essentially recognize the upfront pre-work that would have been completed to further streamline review of the formal planning applications. One of the more significant fee increases recommended in consultant's Phase Two final report was with respect to zoning bylaw amendments. While staff acknowledge the current fee is considerably low for the amount of work involved in this application type, we also recognize the significant degree of variation in developments that tend to require a zoning bylaw amendment. Based on further research, staff are proposing to introduce both minor and major zoning bylaw amendment application fees, with the proposed minor fee representing 50% of the major fee. Staff are also proposing to introduce definitions of major and minor in order to qualify the application type and associated fee. The consultant's Phase Two final report also recommended an additional review cycle fee of $4,500 for each resubmission beyond the first submission. The town currently collects an additional review cycle fee of $640 after two submissions for draft plans of subdivision and after three submissions for site plan control, which is considerably low for the technical review involved. Staff see merit in increasing resubmission fees in an effort to drive a more thorough consideration of technical comments by applicants and ultimately yield better quality and fewer resubmissions. As a result, staff are proposing a resubmission fee of $3,375, which represents 75% cost recovery with a 25% community benefit for major applications such as official plan amendments, zoning bylaw amendments, draft plans of subdivision and major site plan control, and a reduced resubmission and a reduced resubmission fee of $1,722, representing 50% of the proposed major resubmission fee for more minor applications. Furthermore, staff are proposing the resubmission fees applied for each additional review cycle be charged following the first two submissions. Finally, with respect to drawdown contingency deposits, the consultant's Phase Two report recommended a default drawdown deposit of $15,000 be initially collected for each application. Staff note that the contingency deposit amounts for planning applications were significantly adjusted through the 2025 fees and charges bylaw process, and the required contingency deposits are now in amounts of $2,500, $5,000, $7,500, or $10,000, depending on the scale and type of application. Staff are currently monitoring the effectiveness of these contingency deposit amounts and are not proposing any further changes at this time. I would also note that staff are in the midst of finalizing a deposit agreement, per the consultant's recommendations, which will be implemented along with new planning application forms in the near term. Next slide, please. The next few slides highlight the existing and proposed changes to the planning fees for the more common application types that planning services processes. The current 2025 fee is identified along with the proposed 2026 and 2029 fees, representing the phasing in of fees over four years. A 2% Consumer Price Index adjustment has been applied annually to the proposed fees. Fees proposed to increase are identified by orange arrows, and fees proposed to decrease are identified by green arrows. As noted, the decreased fees are proposed to be fully implemented immediately in 2026. The more significant fee increases on this slide pertain to concurrent official plan and zoning bylaw amendment and the major and minor zoning bylaw amendment application types. I would note that the town's current zoning bylaw amendment fee is approximately 50% of the fees charged by comparator municipalities identified in the consultant's report and less than 25% of the fee charged by the Town of the Blue Mountains currently. Next slide, please. On this slide, I would note that the proposed fee increases for these application types are primarily nominal, with a few proposed fee decreases also identified. Next slide, please. On this slide, the more significant fee increases pertain to applications related to site plan control. These applications require a significant amount of technical review, and I would note that the town's site plan control fees are considerably below many of the comparator municipalities identified in the consultant's Phase Two report, including Wasaga Beach and the Town of the Blue Mountains. Next slide, please. So in summary, staff are confident that we have applied a balanced and reasonable approach to the proposed planning fees, including applying a 25% community benefit discount to all planning fees, phasing in the proposed fee increases over a period of four years with a 25% increase per year, and implementing the proposed decreases to planning fees fully in 2026. On average, the proposed fee adjustments represent an overall increase of approximately 15% in 2026, or year one, and approximately 90% in 2029, or year four. This is primarily due to a number of planning fees that are currently well below the processing effort and comparators by orders of magnitude, as outlined in the consultant's final report. And at this time, I will turn the presentation over to Manager Hogg to provide an overview of the proposed building fees. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Ayers, and good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for being here and thank you for the opportunity to present today. My name is Tammy Hogg, Manager of Building Services and Chief Building Official for the Town of Collingwood. The purpose of this portion of the meeting is to share the results of the town's building permit fee review. As you may know, the Ontario Building Code is a provincially mandated regulation. Municipalities like Collingwood are required to make sure that new construction and certain renovations comply with this code. Our building bylaw passed under Section 7 of the Building Code Act gives the town the authority to set classes of permits and establish fees. These fees are essential. They allow us to deliver building services effectively and sustainably without drawing on property taxes. Next slide, please. To carry out this review, the DAP consulting team focused on estimating the full cost of recovery, the full cost of processing building permit applications, and making recommendations, guided by the principle that growth should pay for growth. Their review included mapping the processes for permits, inspections, and occupancy, and estimating the staff time involved. Additionally, staff followed up by comparing our fees with neighboring municipalities to make sure we remain competitive, assessing our building division reserve fund, and looking at trends in permit activity and revenues. Next slide, please. This graph illustrates our revenues, which is the green line, expenditures the red line, and reserve fund balance the yellow line, with the dollar signs along the left axis. The number of permit applications year by year is shown in the blue bars and the numbers indicated on the right axis. Since 2022, you can see our operating expenses have been higher than our revenues collected from permits. The main reason is that permit values have declined. This is linked to factors many of you are familiar with: interest rates, higher construction costs, labor shortages, and lower housing demand. In short, larger projects have been delayed or canceled, and many applications we're now receiving are for smaller, lower-value projects like homeowner renovations and non-residential renovation projects. Next slide, please. The following slides represent some of the proposed key changes. Assembly and detention and care buildings' fees are proposed to increase due to the higher inspection and compliance complexity. Similar increases will apply to multi-unit residential, including hotels and motels. Fees for low-rise residential buildings, semi-detached, and row houses remain unchanged. Next slide, please. On this slide, we follow the trend for consistent increases for new buildings and additions other than low-rise residential. Renovation permits have increased, and a new fee category for tenant finishes has been introduced to capture costs for previously unfinished areas or for shell permits. This chart shows three new fee categories: roof structures, staged permits, and demising walls/firewalls. These have been proposed to consistently capture costs for previously unpriced work. Fire code retrofit fees have been slightly reduced for consistency with other similar flat rate fees. Residential demolition permit fees have been reduced to align with the proposed minimum fee of $170. This last chart shows flat rate fees being adjusted to better reflect the type of work, a new fee for electromagnetic locks and hold-open devices previously unaccounted for. Overall, adjustments aim to achieve full cost recovery, align fees with the service complexity and effort, introduce fees for previously unpriced work, and support affordability and building code compliance where possible. Overall, these changes amount to an average increase of about 15%. The impact will vary by category, but the goal is to make sure the fees align with the actual service costs. Next slide, please. It is important to note that building permit fees are designed to cover 100% of the cost of issuing permits, carrying out inspections, and enforcing the building code. This means the services are fully funded by those who use them and not by property taxes. In summary, the proposed amendments, about a 15% increase overall, will help us achieve full cost recovery, reduce reliance on our reserve funds, and maintain the high quality of service delivery in Collingwood. I'll now pass the microphone to Manager Leal.
Good afternoon. Next slide, please. We only have one slide. Engineering fees are collected in an effort to cover the costs associated with technical review from development engineering staff on development applications. At this time, staff are not recommending an increase to general engineering fees. The current fee structure continues to support departmental operations, and no adjustments are proposed for the base rates. Staff are recommending a timing adjustment to when fees are collected. Historically, applications have not progressed to the agreement stage, some applications, rather, resulting in missed fee recovery opportunities though significant staff time has already been reviewing these applications. The proposed change ensures fees are collected earlier in the process, improving cost recovery and aligning with actual staff effort on applications that may not make it all the way through the process. With respect to preservicing agreements, purpose and structure of a preservicing agreement. So the preservicing agreements are a valuable tool used collaboratively between the town and developers. They allow developers to begin infrastructure work before full subdivision agreement execution, helping to distribute financial obligations over time. These agreements typically split securities into two phases. Phase one being securities for all underground and external servicing infrastructure. Phase two, securities for above-ground constructions such as homes or buildings. Currently, our preservicing agreement has a fee cap of $70,000 flat for all applications. Staff recommend changing the maximum fee cap from a flat $70,000 to 20% of the internal servicing value estimated, plus 100% of estimated external works in the securities, which remains unchanged. This approach better reflects the scale and complexity of individual developments and aligns with area municipalities. Whereas the fee for a preservicing agreement may increase for subdivisions, as an example, it could significantly decrease for site plan applications. Thank you very much, and I'll hand it back to Manager Ayers.
Okay, final few slides. Are we on? Okay, perfect. So as noted earlier in the presentation, the notice of public meeting along with the proposed planning, building, and development engineering fees was published on September 10, 2025. At the time these presentation slides were finalized, the town had not received any comments in response to the proposed fee changes, and staff remain unaware of any further comments that have recently been submitted. Next slide, please. For more information or to submit written comments following this afternoon's meeting, you are welcome to email the Planning, Building, and/or Development Engineering Divisions at the email addresses noted on the screen, or you can submit written comments to Town Hall. I strongly discourage anyone from mailing comments at this time. Verbal comments will only be accepted during today's public meeting. Next slide, please. Following this afternoon's public meeting, written comments regarding the proposed fees will be accepted until Friday, October 24. It is anticipated that amended staff reports will be advanced to council no earlier than November 3, 2025, at which time council would consider staff's recommendations and make a decision. Based on council's decision, the applicable town bylaws would be updated accordingly. Next slide, please. To stay informed regarding the proposed planning, building, and development engineering fees, you can provide us with your contact information on the sign-in sheet available here today, send an email requesting notification to staff, and/or monitor the Town of Collingwood website for committee and council schedules and agendas. And this concludes our presentation today. As noted, Managers Hogg, Leal, and myself are here to listen to comments from members of the public and council, and we will do our best to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Manager Ayers and Chief Building Officer Hogg and Manager Leal. Excellent, extensive presentation in regards to the extensive study that's been put forward and the proposed recommendations. So I'll first turn to the audience to see if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak to this. I don't see any, so I will turn Clerk Comus and ask about online, and there's not there either. So we will move then to council if there's any comments or questions that you would like to put forward. Counselor Jeffrey, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. A really excellent report and easy to read and understand. The only comment I always make is having the understanding when we up these fees, even though we're doing it in the name of not using taxation to offset, that we always recognize we're driving up the cost of all kinds of housing across the board. So that's one disclaimer, if you will. I always put on this that we're cognizant of that. And then the other one that kind of stuck out for me, which would be for COB Hogg, in terms of the revenue versus the expenses in the building permit portion, I'm assuming it's fixed costs that don't allow expenses to drive down with the revenue that's generated. So revenue's going down, but the costs stay up, and I have to assume that's staffing. Would that be a correct assumption?
Through the Chair. Sorry. Yes, most of our fixed costs are for staffing. We also have the computer software that all of the support systems that follow or that support our delivery is also included in those fixed costs, yes.
Okay. All right, I'm just thinking in terms of budgeting and noticing that also that the reserves are declining, that we might need to reassess in terms of the operation of the department. But knowing that there may be an upswing in permits not too far away, yeah, fingers crossed. But anyway, it doesn't seem like it's that close right now. Anyway, those were my questions, so that was an excellent report, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from council? Counselor Doherty, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, I think it's just important to echo Counselor Jeffrey's comments. It is, you know, particularly when we, right now, are looking to increase our housing supply, particularly our affordable housing supply on the one hand, and on the other hand, we are, you know, entertaining the increase of fees, you know, for well-rationalized reasons, but notwithstanding they're there. So I know that staff are sensitive to that quandary, and I just hope that before November 3, that some of the costs may be massaged further, and in particular, if any consideration at all could be given to fees associated with explicitly affordable housing initiatives. I just plant that.
Thank you, Counselor Doherty. As council knows, I had a chance to ask a couple of questions, and Director Valentine provided some very good responses. So I'm actually going to turn to Director Valentine to respond to that. And if you wanted to share, I thought the part in particular about municipal facilities would be excellent to hear as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And through you, certainly staff are very cognizant about the drive from the province to increase housing supply across continuum, but in particular affordable housing that drives our local economy and is affordable to a middle-income household. In that regard, concurrent with the fees review, but under the umbrella of affordable housing, we are working on an incentive program through municipal capital facilities bylaw. So once that is presented to council, and if agreeable, is put into place, that would allow developers of affordable housing, confirmed affordable housing with a focus on rentals, to be able to access incentives to offset fees that are charged. It's important that we have a transparent bylaw of that type so that we can collect all the necessary information and criteria to ensure that we're providing incentives to truly affordable housing that's being maintained over the longer term. That is very difficult to do at the point that the application fees are being paid. So we would strongly suggest to council that we have a mechanism to provide for reductions or waivers to affordable housing, but that would be through a separate process, not the fees review itself.
Any follow-up, Counselor Doherty?
Thank you. And I do appreciate those remarks and those considerations. And I just think it's very important that at this time that the director's comments get added to the public domain in this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Baines, you want to go ahead?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Through you to Manager Ayers, just a question about the 25% community benefit. Is that discretionary on behalf of staff? Does every applicant automatically get that 25% reduction?
Through the Chair to Counselor Baines. The 25% community benefit is factored directly into the planning, or the proposed planning application fees themselves. So it's not a discretionary fee, as outlined in the staff report.
As outlined in the staff report, it is very common for municipalities across the province to somewhat discount the planning fees or development-related fees, given developments inherently do tend to bring community benefits with them. So it was not intended through the proposed fee structure to have this as a discretionary amount, but rather apply it across the board to all planning fees.
Well, just as a follow-up, if I may, then I'm sort of confused as to why implement it in the first place and not just reduce all fees by 25% in the first place, unless, you know, you could use it as a hammer at some point if an applicant was inappropriate perhaps in their applications and staff wanted to, you know, recover more money as a result of a bad application, shall we say.
Through the Chair, perhaps just to clarify to Counselor Baines that the fee has been applied, it has been factored directly into the fee. So there's no additional discount proposed over and above the fees that are before council and the public for consideration today. So it's just noting that the full cost recovery fee would represent 100% of the fee that was identified in the fees chart, whereas staff are recommending that across the board, a 75% fee be applied. But there's no additional discounts over and above what's currently before the public and council.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other counselors wishing to speak? Then my only comment, as I said, it was an excellent report and clearly staff have taken into consideration a host of factors that are being considered. And I, in my opinion, trying to implement them as fairly as possible. When we've dealt with the public over the course of these three years, we've heard quite a bit about development charges and fees and that. And I've been a proponent for leaving development charges as the way we do do them and charging 100%, because that's the way it's always been done for decades here. And to change that would mean that you've treated somebody who's already paid development charges differently than you're charging the ones here. In this particular case, we've been subsidizing. You've pointed out that it's 29% roughly is the recovery. And I've always pointed that out in trying to explain that we, in Collingwood here, we do make some strides towards trying to help with the development, because we've all heard the term growth pays for growth. But here we are, we're recognizing that there's a benefit to all. And so staff's proposal that's being explained is about going down the 25% to recognize that. So if that's it for everyone, then I want to again say thank you very much for the presentation and the excellent study and analysis. And we know that, as we said, there's no decisions being made today. We look forward to any input that can come in. I do intend on sharing this for discussion with the Affordable Housing Task Force this Thursday and get their input. But our coordinator, De Souza, is already well on top of anything that's coming out of that group. So that's great. So thank you very much for that work. The next item will be council minutes. Oh, sorry, Councilor. Yeah, we do have motions. I was just going to say, you've already got it. When I read them, you can put your card up. So on item 7.1, the recommendation is that staff report P 2025-23, Development Approvals Process and Fees Review, Proposed Update to Building Fees, dated October 6, 2025, be received. And that staff return to council no earlier than November 3rd, 2025, with an amended staff report, P 2025-23, containing further recommendations related to the proposed update to the building fees following public and stakeholder consultation. And I believe I have that moved by Counselor Ring and seconded by Counselor Perry. And I will call that matter to, I'll ask if anyone wants to discuss. And so I'll call that matter to a vote. And all those in favor, and that's unanimous. The 7.2 is P 2025-24, and the recommendation is that staff report P 2025-24, Development Approvals Process and Fees Review, Proposed Update to Planning and Development Engineering Fees, dated October 6, 2025, be received. And that staff return to council no earlier than November 3rd, 2025, with an amended staff report, P 2025-24, containing further recommendations related to the proposed update to the planning and development engineering fees following public and stakeholder consultation. And Counselor Putz will move that, and Counselor McCullough will second. And any discussion? Call the matter to a vote then, all in favor? And that's unanimous. And now we will move on to item 8.1, which is council minutes. And the recommendation is that the minutes of the council, committee of the whole meeting held September 15th, 2025, excluding committee of the whole recommendations, and council meeting held September 22, 2025, be approved as presented. And I have a mover in Counselor Doherty and a seconder with Counselor Perry. And any discussion about the minutes? And all in favor? And that's unanimous. Under business arising from previous minutes, is anybody wishing to? I do have one item myself, and I'm just going to call up my notes here. For a second. So from the September 15th minutes, it's noted on page 14 in regards to T 2025-15, which was the 2026 economic overview. There were concerns about the initial budget increase that were voiced and related factors. And although some clarification was received about the capital levy, there were some uncertainties and questions that were left for offline follow-up as per Mayor Hamlin's request. So the resulting email discussions have all been shared with council over the past few weeks. But it will be over a month still before the next scheduled 26 budget discussions. So and also, there's a significant, it's significant that there is some timing sensitivity, in my opinion, and substantial amounts in regards to the investment income. For those reasons, I'm going to bring it up here and ask for some further clarification to be provided by Director Graham. And I did inquire earlier, so to make her aware of it, and get an understanding for the current circumstances. So decision was made back in April to defer allocation of what I recall to be 3.2 million of funds. 1.5 of that was the 2025 net surplus. And then the other 1.7 was the general reserve funds that were above target level. So I had asked during the deferral discussions, and my understanding had been that the 1.5 allocation would also be deferred. But because the 3.2 million had not been considered in the overall 2025 budget and setting our capital tax levy increase. But based on response, and I'll get Director Graham to verify this, that 1.5 million has been allocated, and that's as per staff report T 2025-09, meaning approximately 1.4 million was allocated to lifecycle reserve. So can I turn to Counselor, or to Director Graham, just to verify that?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Through you to you. You're correct. The surplus has been allocated based on our surplus allocation policy. It was the remainder, the excess in the general reserve, the 1.7 million, that was deferred to a later date.
Thank you very much, and sorry for my misunderstanding on that. I knew it would have been allocated properly as far as our policy went. But it was more just to keep it on table because I look at it as part of the reallocation discussions overall, because it wasn't considered when we were setting our 2025 tax increase. The one other area I would briefly clarify on from last meeting is about the 2025 investment income used to finalize the tax levy. So council was notified and, which was fully supported, of the sale of some of the PPNs and a gain of $3.4 million. So again, just asking for clarification by Director Graham that as well, those realized gains were not included when we were doing our analysis of 2025 budget.
Yes, thank you. Through you to you, you're correct. This was not budgeted for. The decisions to sell the PPNs were based on market conditions and the economic overview at the time. I will just reiterate that based on investment allocation at the end of the year, we allocate our investment income first to the reserves and reserve funds and the portion that's actually earning the interest. So roughly, historically, it's been about 20% of investment income that gets put towards operations and the surplus. So in this case, it will be approximately $700,000 to $750,000. Again, that will be known more at the end of the year when we do the investment interest allocation.
Okay. So again, I want to really appreciate, say that I appreciate the clarifications. To me, it's very helpful to get those verifications because, as I said, it'll be next month before we get into budget discussions and that. So unless anybody has any questions because of what I brought up there, that was all I wanted to cover, just relating back to the previous minutes. Okay? So moving now to approval of committee of the whole recommendations. And that's 8.3.1, which is the recommendation is that the committee of the whole recommendations from its meeting held September 15th, 2025, be hereby approved as presented. And those are PRC 2025-05, Multi-Use Recreation Facility Feasibility Assessment Next Steps, as amended. IN 2025-10, Oak Street Canal, and that's the Stormwater Master Plan. C 2025-11, Use of Utility Terrain Vehicles, UTVs, or Snow Removal on Town Roadways, and that's been deferred. CCS 2025-06, Community Climate Action Engagement Finding Report. T 2025-16, Water Financial Plan. T 2025-15, 2026 Economic Overview and Budget Process and Reports and Minutes of Other Committees and Boards. And I'm going to ask for a mover, but just before I do that, I do intend on asking to sever PRC 2025-05. Would I do that before, or do I get the motion first and then I sever that off? Okay. So can I have a mover and a seconder for this motion? And Counselor Jeffrey and Counselor Doherty? And as I said, I'm going to ask to sever the first one. It is an amended report, and it was fairly extensive, and there was a lot of good discussion about it. So I was thinking it would be good to review that separately. I do have a couple of additional questions as well for it. So if that, if there's nothing else that needs to be severed, then I can call to vote the, or, yeah, because I'll vote separately on the sever. And you get a separate mover and second. So a mover and a seconder, or sorry, I have a mover and a seconder. So all those in favor of the non-severed items? And that's unanimous? And then in regards to the severed item, as I said, it is amended. The one particular area that in the motion speaks to expressions of interest, receiving those from private. And I'm going to apologize to Director Cooper because I didn't think to mention that I was going to do this and ask you a question. But I wondered if you could review, how would, I was wondering about how extensive the work is to do expressions of interest requests. And I fully support it being done because I think, as I've said before, when we're doing community facilities, if there's different ways to do it, then we should be looking at them and examining them overall. So just, can you review, once we pass this, as we move forward, how that expression of interest will be sought and kind of what timeframe it would be to it?
Yes, I can. Thank you. So we are currently working on this, this same approach with the Arts Centre location assessment. So we're intending to sort of mirror these or combine these. But the, I'm working with procurement on how we approach this, working with our in-house resource of Dwayne Evans. It's a matter of putting out a call, explaining what it is that we are looking for, what the opportunity, as we know it right now, might be. And really using our communications channels to get out into the community to see if there are private property owners that may want to work with us in finding a solution for an arts centre and/or MRF pending tonight's approval. Next steps, I mean, seeking expressions of interest do not, it's, doesn't hold us to doing anything. It is not like a request for proposal. We are not bound by that. But the intention is to see who is out there, explore it further potentially than exploring with Realtor Services, with the intention of evaluating potential opportunities to bring forward to council. Steps beyond that, pending.
Thank you very much. And again, I'm sorry for not giving you a heads up on that. And that's excellent because that's one of the areas I was thinking about was if we're doing this with the MRF, and it is such a good idea to do it, just to kind of tick that box of the possibilities. I was, I'm pleased to hear that we're looking at it in the same vein for the Arts Centre. And does anybody else have any questions surrounding the, this particular item or what I just got clarification on? Okay, so that being said, thank you again for responding to that. And I think we can just call this matter to a vote as well with the same mover and seconder. So unless anybody has any discussion, all those in favor? And that's approved unanimously. Now we'll move on to staff reports, and there are none. There's also no bylaws. But we do have some department updates. Under 11.1, we always make reference to the proper health and well, but as it's noted, there's no updates since our last meeting. So I believe I'll be turning over to Director Valentine in regards to the routine OLT appeals update.
Thank you, Chair. And through you, the OLT update this week is relatively positive. In late September, the week of September 22nd, the town received circulation of four separate Ontario Land Tribunal decisions that enact settlements reached between the appellants and the town based on council direction provided in camera. We're pleased to advise that the tribunal rate ruled in favor of the settlements in all four cases, and therefore, the following appeals are considered to be resolved with the planning instruments now in force and effect. So the first is Appeal 4 to the new official plan, known as DNRN, for the site located at 10045 Highway 26, more commonly known as or referred to as the Smash Pickleball Site. This appeal has been resolved, and it also removes a party that was sheltering under that appeal. The next resolved appeal is Appeal number 12 to the new official plan, known as Monroe, which was not a site-specific appeal, but impacted the general policies that could impact future plans for the Cranberry Golf Course. Then we have Appeal 14 to the new official plan. This one was known as the High Street Lot Assembly, which implements natural hazard and heritage studies related to that site, which is located across High Street from the County Support of Rapid Rehousing Facility. And finally, Blackmore Gates, which is applicable to the lands bounded by Finley, Campbell, and Huron-Tario streets. Council had requested that the OLT decision, once rendered, and a letter describing the history of the application be sent to neighbors as a courtesy. This is being combined with a Committee of Adjustment circulation for the same property, And it is also being sent out to our Courtesy Notice List for the file. So zooming out to the big picture, that leaves the town with 13 active appeals to the new official plan and two site specific appeals. Both of those are relating to the development known as Huntingwood Trails. Mediation continues on the majority of these appeals. Again, that is a confidential process, so we cannot provide updates in public. The mediation is anticipated to continue to consume a significant amount of staff time through October and likely into November. And we will certainly be providing further updates as they become available on these remaining appeals, either to council in camera or publicly, depending on the nature of the information being shared. Thank you, Chair. That is the update for today and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Director Valentine. Any questions from members? Don't see any. So again, thank you. We know it's a tremendous amount of work dealing with these appeals and we appreciate the directors and and department staff effort in that regard. The next item would be a presentation, I believe, on the Forestry Urban Tree Canopy Priority Project Review. And I'll turn it to Director Cupid and Forestry Coordinator Cameron.
Thank you, Chair Fryer. We actually also have Parks Manager Wendy Martin joining us today. And yes, you'll be introduced to our Forestry Coordinator Donald Cameron. I was going to say our newest staff member, but I don't actually know if that's accurate. So we're pleased to have both here and Wendy will start us off with the presentation.
Welcome and you go right ahead.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor and council members for allowing us to speak today on the urban forestry update. Next slide, please. So council has long recognized the importance of trees. We all know they're essential to they are an essential community asset that improve air quality, provide shade, reduce heat, enhance biodiversity and contribute to mental and physical health. In 2020, or sorry, in 2020, we presented to council the Urban Forest Management Plan and it was adopted. And this plan ensures a proactive coordinated approach to planting, maintaining and preserving trees on public lands. So on the slide, it mentions that the plan provides recommendations related to planning, design, maintenance operations and risk management decisions that have an impact on public trees, as well as consideration for an appropriate framework for trees on private lands. And the plan highlights the need to plant the right tree for the right place for proactive tree establishment and replacement. Balancing development while protecting the urban forest is key to supporting the town's community-based strategic plan. Pillar number one, sustainable, under the action of maintain, renew and enhance our natural heritage assets, including urban forests that support livability and quality of life in our town. The plan also sets out long-term goals and actionable steps to ensure the urban canopy is sustainable and resilient into the future. Next slide, please. So the urban forestry is a recognized subservice within the Parks and Harbour subservice in the town's programs and services. And the the key services that are included in this include keeping the town's tree inventory up to date and reporting on tree related performance measures. Tree inspections, whether they come through staff or through the public and prioritizing the work of rectifying those inspections. Management of contract and in-house forces for external tree removal, pruning and planting. And providing publication, public education about the urban forest, including work underway and how we're supporting our urban forest in Collingwood, as well as issuing permits and recommending securities under the tree destruction bylaw and providing leadership for urban forestry related related policies and procedures. So council has demonstrated their commitment by adopting the Urban Forest Management Plan and approving the hiring of the Coordinator of Forestry. This commitment allows staff to work proactively to manage and protect the urban forest as a key piece of community infrastructure. So I'm very happy to introduce Donald Cameron. Donald has been with us for just over a year and comes to us from the city of Toronto where he collaborated with their planning department in reviewing tree preservation plans, providing comments to the Committee of Adjustment, investigating contraventions and issuing permits. He was also one of eight supervisors of forestry operations in Toronto where he oversaw staff and contractors with daily tree removal, pruning and planting. Donald is a certified arborist with the International Society of Arborists. He brings a wealth of knowledge and hands-on experience to the town and is a great addition to guide the Urban Forest Management Plan recommendations, as well as council and resident goals related to tree canopy and urban forest. So I welcome you to meet Donald and he's going to walk you through the next couple of slides.
Welcome, Coordinator Cameron, and great to have you with us.
Well, thank you, Deputy Mayor and council members for allowing me to present the Urban Forestry Operations Update today. My role includes four operational plan items. I think we're one slide too 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 much. Perfect. Thank you. My role includes four operational plan items. I will review these as well as dive into some of the tasks undertaken this past year. With a growing canopy comes responsibility to care for it. The plan includes the development of a robust maintenance program to support tree health and public safety. Preventative care reduces long-term costs, extends the life of trees and improves overall service delivery. In delivering year one, Urban Forestry Subservice Responsibilities Task One, initially there was 200 work orders existing between parks and public works, which were prioritized. And the work was arranged to be completed by contractors and in-house staff. Stay tuned for some numbers later on in my update. I will continue to respond to residents' inquiries and concerns by collaborating with in-house staff and overseeing contractor work. We are developing operational and capital proposed budgets for forestry. We've been working on operational schedules for tree pruning, removal and planting. And we are updating the website with information related to urban forestry. Next slide, please. Task two, Tree Canopy Preservation and Augmentation Approach. In 2025, assisting infrastructure growth and development with providing urban forestry related documents for the Engineering Development Standards Update, including tree setbacks, tree planting specifications and tree species lists. In 2025 and 2026, there's the updating of tree bylaws for council consideration. And it will be a task led by consultant with community engagement in 2026. In 2026, a tree canopy study will be scheduled. This is to keep the five-year cycle as mentioned in the Forestry Management Plan. And also tackle plans to enhance replanting. Next slide, please. So task three, Urban Forestry Policy and Procedures Development. There's been collaboration with customer service to develop procedures for responding to tree inquiries and follow-up. Developing an overarching tree policy that focuses on stewardship and conservation of the urban forestry and developing urban forestry procedures related to operations, maintenance and removals. Next slide, please. Task four, Urban Forestry Initiative Initiate and Populate Tree Inventory. So update the public tree inventory standard template in the GIS system to include such items as tree diameter, location, which is important when grinding the stumps, tree health and utility locations. There is a plan to include all trees overcoming next two to five years. In 2026, we'll start to undertake an urban site index to evaluate potential planting sites with a corresponding species evaluation to ensure and to ensure the right tree for the right place is being applied to sustain our tree population. Next slide, please. So all of this comes from working together. And so there's cross-departmental commitment to urban forestry. I've been assisting by law officers with property standards investigations. There's been 20 sites where there was an inspection done and comments made. And there was one that went to the Property Standards Appeal. IT Department has assisted with setting up GIS tree data sets. Customer service collaboration to provide timely responses to residents' inquiries. Assisting Planning Department with providing review of tree preservation plans and new developments and infill development, as well as their input on revisions to new regulatory framework. And Public Works collaborates within their defined roles and responsibilities regarding keeping right-of-ways safe and addressing hazards, blocking roads, sightlines and signage. Next slide, please. Now we're back to the numbers. So the main contractor with a bucket truck and train staff with hydro clearance, we've seen them 47 days in 2025. And I say 63 crew days because some days we have two crews and not just one. They performed 181 removals and 57 prunes. We've also had to use specialized contractors, ones with backyard lifts, cranes and stump grinders. There's been three prunes, 75 removals plus 57 removals, which was one park, Walnut Street Park. And there was 36 stumps within the parks. The Parks Division has performed 30 prunes and 90 removals. And most removals, approximately 85% were dead ash trees. Tree planting in 2024, there was 113 boulevard trees planted and through Canopy Collingwood, 304 trees. So that program's very significant. And spring 2025, there's there was 24 boulevard trees planted and Canopy Collingwood has seen 75 trees this year planted. The fall planting numbers have not yet been finalized. Since starting in August 2024, there's been 250 work orders completed and 125 work orders remain in the queue as of the end of September 2025. Next slide, please. The future. There's a desire to move towards a more proactive approach instead of reactive, where we would be doing block pruning and inventorying available planting sites. Using our website to better inform the public regarding trees, pests and diseases. It could be linking them to other sites with that information and giving them bulletin, safety bulletins. Tree protection and preservation policies that will balance growth and tree canopy via the development standards updates. Dead ash tree removals, they're predominantly backing onto private property and the town's trail network is where we still have a lot of dead ash trees. Site modification bylaw and of course, the urban forestry master plan has steps that we need to keep checking in on and following up on and accomplishing. Next slide, please. This is a photo of the equipment and skill required when performing work around energized conductors. Next slide, please. These two photos show a specialized crew brought in to remove a large dead ash tree next to a public walkway in school on Finley Drive. This tree was exceptionally large. It came in at 147 centimeters diameter. Approximately, it was kind of hard to measure it. Next slide, please. This is the photo on the left shows Walnut Street Park and the 57 dead ash trees being removed. Again, by a specialized contractor. And then the photo on the right shows dead ash trees being removed in Kinsman Park by park staff and myself. Next slide, please. So planting for the future. This final photo shows a newly commemorative tree that was planted. In final comments, the community has consistently voiced strong support for tree protection and greening efforts. Through council's direction, we are planning for a greener, more climate resilient community. And with permission from the Chair, I'd like to open the floor to questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you, Wendy. Is anyone from council wishing to speak? Counselor Potts, go ahead.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Fryer. The one of the questions I have on here, when it comes to maintenance and within the right-of-ways, we one of the concerns I have is we have a number of areas in Collingwood where there's blind spots when you're pulling out on the streets. And a couple of specific locations that I'm aware of, they've been called into service, calling with and put on the list. And I think they would be, in my opinion, a high danger rating as far as as sightlines. And I look at it like in cases like that, if there is a plan, I just look at it. When it comes to the right-of-ways, it's I would like to see it be more of a proactive than reactive. And I mean, all of our, I'm sure our staff travel the streets quite often. It just seems to be that it's unfortunate if, you know, somebody calls into service, calling with to put in a request for, you know, a sightline issue and it gets added to the queue. I mean, time is of the essence, especially when it comes to traffic and vehicular safety. And just on my way walking down to council today, I was with an issue of being hit at a corner and the lady rolled her window down and said, I'm very sorry, I couldn't see it because of the sightline. And there are a number of locations. So just to see, I mean, I just see it as it's a concern of mine. So I'll see if you have any to add.
So is that a question or is that more of a comment?
Well, I guess my question will be is what is the what is the plan to address those kind of things? Because I think going through the service calling with model that we have, I mean, it's there are a couple of locations that we're talking months ago and they've been added, they've been added to the list. But I think that there's a danger rating to them or a or, you know, kind of something that is a little bit longer than just, you know, waiting months. So I don't know how.
I think we'll we'll turn to Cao Skinner in that regard then.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There is some division of the work related to uncovering signs versus the larger harder core tree of urban forestry work. So I'd like to take that one away. I think that one might be an item that's in the public works prioritization potentially as opposed to the urban forestry piece. But if there are signs that are covered, we'd like to follow up on that. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And just to follow up, I mean, just looking at the report, there was a portion here that, I mean, it was all in the same report and that's why I was asking. So if it's something that we can, you know, definitely look at, try to clarify, is it public works? And then this goes back to my concerns earlier on about how it was being divided because I just, I think this is something that's significant concern that needs to be addressed sooner than later. So thanks.
Okay, so we'll we'll get back on that then. That's great. Anything further? Counselor Doherty, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much, Manager Cameron, for your report. I am delighted to to finally welcome an urban tree canopy planner to our podium. So and very pleased to see the plans and the prioritization that you have laid out here. I just I had a just a couple of questions just to delve a little further. So the first is among the bylaw initiatives that you will be undertaking, will you be developing a private tree protection bylaw?
So through the Chair to Counselor Doherty, I were bringing in a consultant. So there was a consultant who started an initial review. And now we're heading out with an RFP to have the bylaws looked at, but it's going to take public engagement for sure. I know when Toronto and other municipalities have done it, you've you've got to have a lot of feet on the ground. You've got to have planners, you've got to have bylaw officers and so forth to enforce the bylaws that you're implementing. So it's not something that you want to hastily put in, but it's something that in 2026 will be through public engagement looking at.
Thank you. So and then my second question. Thank you. So, and then my second question is, and I have brought this up previously. And there is quite a differential in the distribution of our canopy, you know, within the central core, sort of north of Sixth Street, you know, kind of between High Street and streets going beyond, no actually even, yeah, beyond, sorry, and east of Hero Ontario Street. And then if you look generally south of Sixth Street between High and Hero Ontario, there's, it's quite an obvious reduction in the canopy. And I'm just wondering if that will be addressed as part of your plans.
So through the Chair to Councilor Doherty, as I do the tree inventory, the goal is to find those vacant planting locations. A lot, and thanks, thank goodness to Canopy Callingwood, a lot of the urban forest emphasis will have to be on the private lands just because with the infill and the development, there's not as many opportunities to get the trees out front on a boulevard. But during the planning process, they, with their setbacks, they're putting trees wherever they can. Of course, they're small trees. They're not the majestic older trees that are in north of the area that you're referring to. So. But yeah, it's definitely, I mean, as you remove trees, you're losing quite a big canopy to a mature tree. If it's trying to get those little trees in there so that you can keep up with your canopy coverage.
Good, thank you. And then just, actually, just one final. And that is, you mentioned collaboration with parks and with engineering. And I'm just wondering, is there consideration for collaboration with our climate change specialist? Because as you are well aware, trees can contribute quite significantly to climate change mitigation.
Right. So through the Chair to Councilor Doherty, I've been afforded the opportunity to be involved with the evaluation of the the proposals that came in for the climate change, I believe it's adaptation. And so going forward, I hope to be at the roundtable, providing input as they go through community engagement and as the company that's been awarded the contract goes forward on their plans. So, yeah, it's definitely part of climate change adaptation. And so.
Thank you. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Councilor Jeffrey, do you have some questions?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Maybe not so much a question, but a suggestion and maybe not to our management, perhaps through the CAO. As the specialized removals are going around and taking down some pretty substantial trees in town, I have been receiving calls from residents who are upset at not having noticed. They understand the reason why. But when one of those trucks moves into your neighborhood and is taking a huge tree down off your front yard and blocks the entire street and nobody had any notice that it was happening, it's been a little bit upsetting and they've kind of called. So really, just in the interest of never-ending improvement, that if we could maybe add a component to letting people know this is going to be happening in their neighborhood at some point over the next week or so. Yes, Deputy Mayor has a response.
Go ahead. Okay, if I can just comment on that, I've been working with customer service on a door knocker. Because obviously sometimes people aren't home, so you can't interact. And customer service, when they get my notes and I've planned the work, then they try their best to call out to the person that initiated that work order. But a door knocker would be great. So we're just trying to work on it so that it gets the right message across. So I can have tick boxes to say that, you know, I've been here on this date and your tree's been planned for pruning or removal. And maybe fill them in on the details of how a removal will take place, how it's not just one stage, it's multiple stages. So, yeah.
Thank you. I think that's excellent. Thank you.
Councilor Doherty, a follow-up?
Sorry, Chair. Just one final question. Once upon a time, there was a mechanism whereby members of the public could call the town and request a tree to be planted on their boulevard. Is that program still in place? And where would someone call? Because I would expect that this is the time of year that we're actually doing some tree planting.
Okay.
Through you, Chair.
Through the Chair to Councilor Doherty. So they can call into customer service or they can create their own service requests off of the website, but it will create a planting request and then it will be added to the planting lists for the next planting season. So we plant in the fall or in the spring for obvious reasons. I mean, in the summer, it would be just water, water, water.
Okay, thank you.
Any further? My one area question would be, with Simcoe County bordering our region, is there some coordination involved there? Or I'm just thinking of the case where if they're maybe taking down some trees in a particular area and could just simply go across the road and assist or I guess even vice versa. So is there any coordination with the Simcoe County in their efforts along our borders?
Okay, through the Chair to the Chair. The, there really isn't, at least to my knowledge. They, so far I find, you know, they'll deal, their trees and we'll deal with ours. I'll sometimes refer work to the Conservation Authority because it's in their realm along the waterway. And there, I've attempted to, I've had a little bit of success at times working with EPCOR. So if I see something that's obviously beyond our scope, it's in direct contact and that would be referred to EPCOR. And they would either remove the tree or they'd get below the energized conductor so that the crews could then come in safely and remove the rest of the tree.
Yeah, I can appreciate that. It's not just Simcoe County, I guess, and the one border, it's Gray County. So it involves a couple of different parties. So any other? Thanks. And Councilor Baines, no? So again, thank you very much for your presentation today and updating us on the canopy. Thank you.
Very welcome. Thank you.
We'll move to the next item and that's the consent agenda. And I'll read out the recommendation. That council herein received a general consent agenda and staff recommendations contained herein. And further, that the information and opinions provided in the general consent agenda items are that of the authors and are not verified or approved as being correct. Twelve point one, proclamation National Breastfeeding Week. Twelve point two, proclamation Probus Month. Twelve point three, proclamation World Mitrocondial Disease Week. Twelve point four, Honorable Stan Chow Minister Tourism, Culture, and Gaming Letter Regarding Thank You For Your Participation In The 2025 AMO Conference. Twelve point five, Ottawa Area Residents Association Letter Regarding Concerns With Subdivision Development. Twelve point six, Township of East Garifaxa Regarding Support For H E R Elect Respect Campaign. And twelve point seven, Township of Southgate Regarding Elect Respect Pledge. Twelve point eight, Town of Midland Regarding Oppose The Elimination Of Automated Speed Enforcement. Twelve point nine, Correspondence Regarding Inclusion Of Non-Plug-In Vehicles In Canada Zero-Emissions Vehicle Mandate. Twelve point ten, Loaf Planning Letter Regarding Request For Partial Deferral Of Development Charges For DNRN Holdings Inc. One zero zero four five Highway Twenty Six Phase One. And that includes a recommendation with it that council authorize the mayor and treasurer to execute a development charge deferral agreement under section twenty-seven of the Development Charges Act with DNRN Holdings Inc. For the town and county-wide development charges otherwise payable at the time of building permit issuance for the development of one zero zero four five Highway Twenty Six, Town of Callingwood. And that the agreement be registered on title with deferred development charges payable over a twenty-four month period, including interest at one percent above the prescribed rate and paid monthly upon issuance of a building permit by the chief building official with all outstanding development charges due and payable at the time of closing should the lands be sold within the term of the agreement. And that council confirm the accrued interest of thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-five cents remains payable as the application of interest on frozen development charges is permitted under the Development Charges Act and is applied consistently to all developers to ensure fairness and equity across the development community. So I'll ask for a mover and a seconder on that and then I will ask if anyone would like to pull. So Councilor Jeffrey and Councilor Ring. And twelve point ten will be pulled for discussion because of the recommendations. And just wondering if there's anything else anybody would like to pull. Councilor Jeffrey?
Twelve point six, twelve point seven, and twelve point eight, please.
Okay. And Councilor Doherty?
Twelve point six, twelve point seven.
Okay. Anyone further? I am going to speak to twelve point nine. I'm not seeking any kind of direction. I just was going to use it as an opportunity up to date about the meeting I attended in regards to the Simcoe County Auto Group. So I will speak to that at the end when the other ones have been dealt with. So I think then we would move to Councilor Jeffrey in regards to twelve point six and twelve point seven. And you can take it from there.
Thank you very much. So I guess sad to see that it has to come up again, but I'm happy to see that there's an initiative to address it with at least a pledge amongst ourselves and with our community. The idea of abuse of political officials and staff and others involved in our municipal political world was originally brought through the province of Quebec some years ago, possibly eight years ago. Quebec actually has a hotline for their municipal politicians. I think they've lost a cumulatively seven hundred politicians due to abuse. And it was with the onset of abuse by social media. So with that said, I'm going to bring a notice of motion with respect to this pledge at the appropriate agenda item.
Councilor Doherty, you want to speak to those items too?
Same thing.
Okay. So I believe then we'll move to twelve point eight. Councilor Jeffrey?
Thank you very much. Only to note that, pleased that I see that Councilor Doherty is bringing a motion with AMO support to Councilor Potts and I's initiative with respect to the automated speed enforcement which council endorsed. And I did have the benefit of a report from AMO President Robin Jones this morning under my FCM Ontario Caucus meeting. And she brought up some examples. So I'll leave that discussion for when Councilor Doherty's motion is spoken to.
Okay, so anything, anyone else wants to say about twelve point eight? Okay, I will, I will comment on twelve point nine before we move to twelve point ten then. So I had asked to have these added to the agenda so council members would be up to date on what has been submitted to the federal government already. I came across them in the correspondence list and I hadn't been aware of the specific motion. So I placed it on the consent agenda and included ClearView's supporting letter on behalf of the New Tech motion. Considering whether I would ask council here to provide support or such, as it turned out, I was asked by Mayor Norcross to participate in Mayor Hamlin's absence at the second meeting of the auto group that was held last week. So in regards to that meeting, Economic Development Manager Sharma was also able to join in. And it was an informative meeting as we heard from a Midland auto industry company and also directly from Honda Canada President and CEO Dave Jamison, who just happens to be a Callingwood native. While currently all production facilities continue to manufacture at almost full capacity, there is significant concern about the current zero emission vehicle mandate of the federal government over and above just the inclusion of the non-plug vehicles, which is the motion that we've seen that's currently being sent. So staff are monitoring, next steps with the expectation that New Tech will determine another submission motion. And when they do, in my opinion, that's when Callingwood can bring forward formal support. So I'll also just add that staff continue to engage our local Callingwood auto industries to ensure we are completely up to date with their situations. For the meeting, VOA's president joined in on the call and was actually prepared to give an update to the group, but time expired. So likely will be involved next meeting and then we let them know as well that if they needed to contact us about anything that was discussed at the meeting or any current situations, to please let us know. So I wanted to update council in regards to that important group and the meetings that are ongoing and trying to help our auto industry companies in the local areas because they're so vitally important to the area. So any questions in regards to that information? Looked like it. So we'll move on to item twelve point ten and I don't, we weren't looking for any staff input unless there's questions that council members may have in regards to this recommendation. Everyone's had a chance to look over the letter and then there's the ensuing recommendations that are made by staff. So any questions in regards to them? Councilor Doherty?
Thank you. First of all, I'd say this is a very creative initiative for sure. I guess, and, you know, in principle, I don't, I don't see any immediate issues with the request, but I am concerned is, is it a slippery slope? That is, and maybe that's the, you know, million-dollar question. But I was wondering through you to staff if I could get comment and their view on this recommendation.
Certainly. And I believe I would turn to Director Graham. And I think if you wanted to review the fact that section twenty-seven allows the request and then just, you're probably going to do that anyway. So you go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Through you to Councilor Doherty. You're absolutely correct. I was going to reference section twenty-seven, section twenty-seven agreement. So under section twenty-seven of the D C Act, this is permissible. It does require council approval. Staff, do you support the request to enter into a section twenty-seven agreement under the Development Charges Act for this non-residential development? As it does provide a mechanism to manage the timing of the payment without reducing the total D C's owing, the agreement offers financial flexibility to the developer while ensuring the town's interests are protected. This approach supports continued non-residential investment in economic growth in Callingwood while maintaining the town's ability to recover growth-related costs in accordance with the legislation. I will say though, that staff did not support waiving the applicable D C interest on the current D C freeze as noted in the recommendation. current DC freeze, as noted in the recommendation, as doing so would be inconsistent with best practice and could create inequity among developers. Maintaining the interest requirement ensures fairness, transparency, and adherence to the TAN's obligation to apply the DC Act consistently to all developers. I hope that helps.
Thank you. Follow-up? Councillor Doherty?
Yeah, thank you. So just to be clear, this motion does acknowledge that the accrued interest is payable. So that would be the, the recommendation, the entire recommendation we'd be voting on today. Yes?
Yes, that's confirmed.
Thank you.
And I'm very supportive of the recommendation as it reads as well. I'd made my earlier comments about being supportive of, of how we do the development charges, and that includes interest when applicable. So if that's all good, then we have this matter to vote on, which would be receiving all and including the recommendations of 12.10. So we have a mover and a seconder already. Call the matter to a vote then. And that is unanimous. That's great. County report. I don't have anything specific. When I bring up county report, I'll probably always remind that there's the pending significant changes in, in the fact that county will no longer be handling recycling as of January 1st. So I'm always going to bring it up because this is, this three months, I think, is really important that we keep it at the forefront so that the public's aware of it because we're trying to minimize and make it as seamless as possible. But it is a significant change. And most significantly, it'll be two trucks making pickups on the day of. So the day isn't going to change, but obviously the scheduling of when you normally would see your, your recycling picked up is, is going to change. And most likely, it's going to stretch through the whole day instead of just one period of the day. So if, if anybody has any questions about recycling, certainly just let me know, and we'll try to follow up on them. We continue to look into the organics situation in multi-res, which we had hoped there was a, a solution coming along, and then that seemed to have had to change a little bit. So, but unless anybody had any questions county-related, that was the only item that I was going to update about today. Councillor Doherty?
Thank you. What I can do actually is speak to discussions that were held last week at the AMO board and executive meetings with regard to blue box transition generally across the province. And right now, AMO has very significant concerns regarding the proposed process in particular because it will eliminate pickup for ICE. So it's a significant concern. It was not envisioned when the whole notion of blue box transition was, was proposed, I guess, now going back four years ago. So there will be, AMO is consulting with BIA's chambers and other sector representatives, and they will be bringing forward a fulsome policy report in November, which is our next meeting.
And that's great. And at the same time, I know we've, we've talked about the fact that Simcoe County is trying to work closely with the county BIAs and, and associations because we're trying to come up with a county solution that, that can work in regards to getting the service to continue because it's so ultra-important that it does continue. And there seems to be some positive movement in that regard, but it's, it's not too far away. As you said, it's, I mean, all this time, and we're still not quite there as knowing whether or not it's going to be carried forward. So it is a concern, and it continues to be monitored by Simcoe County as well. Anything else? Okay. So the next item is under 14.1. It's showing strong air powers and under my, my motion. So I was going to make some remarks because as anticipated on this agenda, I gave notice last meeting and intended to bring a motion forward today to direct a request to the province that Collingwood be removed from the strong air power municipalities list. Since I decided not to provide a formal motion, I wanted to explain about that decision. Firstly, I wanted to confirm that there are many instances over the past six months that are examples of negative impacts of smart, strong air powers. But based on recent clarification from Clerk O'Meath, there are aspects of each of them that are confidential discussions. And that leads me to the reality that it'd be greatly difficult to provide a convincing argument to council to generate sufficient support using only the public information at this point in time. So regarding support of all of council, that is one of the major reasons the Ramera letter that was referred to last meeting was so good. Mayor Clark was in full support of the request because strong air powers are not democratic in, in our opinion. For Collingwood council, that's not the case because the powers are being exercised, most specifically by not delegating back to council authority for the CAO position and the prescribed committee appointments. Clearly, the vast majority of mayors have delegated back to council what, what they are allowed to. I can honestly say I would give back to council if, the authority, if I could, or at least give an explanation on why it isn't being done that justifies one person having complete control. Another factor in deciding not to bring forward formal motion is that over the past three weeks, I had opportunity to make some informal inquiry of the ministry. Essentially, it was very evident in those brief discussions that there would be minimal support to remove any municipality from the strong air powers list. Finally, I see more harm than benefit in sending another request into the province, even though it is such an inappropriate ask. We have the upcoming governance review report and ensuing discussions, and that will be another opportunity for discussion about governance going forward. Unfortunately, from what I've heard over the past few weeks, I think there's going to be some other additional changes by the province. And that may impact governance in some degree as well. So it'll be good to have those known when we do have our discussion in regards to the governance, so going forward. But I wanted to provide that explanation as I had intended on making the motion, and I believe that council would be wondering why it wasn't there. So leave it at that. And that moves us into committee of the whole at the two-hour mark, I'll point out. Do you think we need a break? We'll just take a quick five-minute break then, if everyone's okay with that, because the rest agendas should move on pretty good. Yeah. And that's great. Thank you, everyone. Oh, do we need a motion on that? Yes. Yeah. So 15.1 is a recommendation that council herein move into committee of the whole session to begin five minutes from now. Councillor Perry and councillor McCullough and all those in favor. And that would be everyone. And I could just say, I know the very first item is the item councillor Baines that you will be taking leave. So I guess you'll join us at the five-minute mark, and then, and then your camera will be turned off? Okay. Good.
25 proposed draft plan of subdivision approval, extension request, Huntingwood Trails West, 5 Silver Creek Drive, town file, P L E D, P 2025 232. And I'd like to welcome Director Valentine. Oh, sorry.
I will recuse myself as noted earlier.
Okay, and I believe Counselor Baines is doing the same thing. Director Valentine?
Uh, thank you Chair for the opportunity to provide some introductory comments. Staff have been before Council and Committee a number of times in the past few years, both in open session and in camera regarding the Huntingwood Trails Development Project. You may recall that the proposal, which is south of Highway 26 between the Forest Subdivision and the Silver Glen Preserve condominiums, include two development areas known as the West and East Lands. While the overall context for this file is certainly complex, including three different appeals to the Ontario Land Tribunal that are active at this present time, the report before you is relatively straightforward. The draft plan of subdivision for the Westerly Development Pod was approved by the Ontario Land Tribunal through a settlement in 2022. Due to the scale and longer build out times for subdivision, draft approval essentially represents an approval in principle, where the applicant is given a set period of time to fulfill a number of conditions. This time period expiry is known as the lapsing date. If all the conditions are not fulfilled by the lapsing date, the landowner may apply for an extension of that date. The municipality may consider this type of request, and staff would review these applications in the context of the most up to date policies, standards, regulations and guidelines, as well as considering the progress made by the applicant to date to move towards shovel readiness. Such an extension request is the subject of the report before you, and also is the driving force behind one of the three appeals currently lodged by the Huntingwood developer. Senior Planner Tickle is here to take us through the details of the application, and we'll both be available to support Committee in your deliberation. One unusual note, staff have recommended the, that the resolution of this report be ratified today after Committee of the Whole rises in order to meet timelines associated with one of the appeals. Thank you Chair, and I would pass the floor to Senior Planner Tickle at your concurrence.
Senior Planner Tickle?
Okay, thank you Chair, Director Valentine. Good afternoon Committee members. So this is the presentation for Report P 2025-25 regarding the extension request application for a draft plan of subdivision known as Huntingwood Trails West, located at 5 Silver Creek Drive. Next slide please. So when evaluating an extension request, staff consider the following in making a recommendation: the file history and status, consistency and or conformity with the relevant planning policies and legislation, regulations, as well as applicable technical standards and guidelines, servicing and infrastructure requirements, the applicant's effort to advance development or progress, and other important matters of interest to council in the community. Next slide please. So in terms of location and context, the subject lands are located at 5 Silver Creek Drive and Highway 26 with frontage on Silver Creek Drive. The portion of the land subject to the proposed development are on the western side, and it's generally flat and mostly open field with some treat areas. Central to the site is a vacant single detached dwelling with two accessory buildings. There's also a barn near the western lot line. The environmentally protected eastern side of the subject lands contain the Silver Creek and adjacent lands of a mixture of open fields and forest. The Georgian Trail abuts the lands to the south, and existing single detached residential abuts the lands to the west. Next slide please. In terms of a brief file history, in September 2022, the Ontario Land Tribunal approved the draft plan of subdivision. Between November 2022 and November 2023, the applicant undertook fieldwork to inform reports required by the draft plan conditions. In December 2023, the applicant submitted the first submission application to clear draft plan conditions. November 2024, the applicant submitted a second submission to clear draft plan conditions. And in June of 2024, the subject request for draft plan approval extension was submitted in anticipation of the lapse date of September 19th, 2025. On August 13th, 2025, the applicant lodged an appeal to the Ontario Land Tribunal regarding the lapsing provision. Next slide please. So this is the approved draft plan, which is the 2022 version. The 86 lots in yellow are for single detached dwellings. The seven lots in the salmon color, we'll call it, are for 14 semi-detached dwellings. Block 94 in blue is for a stormwater management pond. Blocks 95 and 96, highlighted in green, are for open space. And the large block on the east, block 97, is for environmental protection. And the small unhighlighted block at the south, block 98, is for future development. There are also two public streets, one of which would connect the subdivision to Silver Creek Drive. Conditions of draft plan approval require a walkway block to be provided to connect the subdivision to the Georgian Trail to the south. Next slide please. In terms of technical review, it conforms with the existing official plan designation and zoning, as well as the new official plan or 2024 official plan. One minor technical update to the conditions of draft plan approval is recommended to note a change in the applicable regulations of the Conservation Authorities Act as requested by the NVCA. Next slide please. In terms of site-specific considerations to this site, include municipal servicing is available to the site, the near-term delivery of housing is possible, the applicant has demonstrated significant progress to clear conditions of draft plan approval, and there are extenuating circumstances that include registration not expected to be able to occur until September 2027. There is an ongoing OLT appeal related to the Huntingwood Trail East Lands, and there's a need to ensure connectivity of any development on the East Lands with the subject lands to the west. And there are macroeconomic challenges, including tariffs, rising construction costs, slowing housing market. And lastly, the subject site is adjacent to significant natural heritage features and hazard lands, which require additional study and monitoring prior to final approval, as well as presenting additional complexity to the detailed design of infrastructure works. Next slide please. So staff are recommending that council approve the request for an extension for a period of three years, with the expectation the proponent will continue to progress expeditiously towards registration. Further, it's recommended that council ratify the report today in accordance with legal advice. The primary reason for recommending a three-year extension is that the applicant has demonstrated significant progress towards registration during their initial three-year draft plan approval. Instead, staff do not have immediate reasons for concern that the applicant will not continue to advance a subdivision to be shovel ready and bring housing to market. While registration with two, within two years appears to be achievable, three years provides an additional buffer and avoids the process to seek a further one-year extension in two years' time if needed. Alternatively, council may choose to extend the draft plan for a different period of time in a manner keeping with the service and capacity allocation policy. As the applicant has proactively appealed the lapsing provision to the OLT, if council selects a timeline less than the three years requested by the landowner, they may seek an adjustment to the lapsing date by the OLT. Council can choose to further modify the draft plan of subdivision and/or its conditions of approval in support of the extension. And lastly, council can decline to grant the extension request and let the draft plan approval lapse on October 19th, 2025. However, it's likely the applicant would use its already lodged appeal at the tribunal to seek a different outcome. Staff do not recommend amendments or lapsing. Next slide please. So in terms of next steps, the agent will be advised of council's decision pertaining to the extension request. The updated conditions of draft plan approval come into force in effect unless they are challenged at the tribunal and future subdivision agreement once conditions of draft plan approval are satisfied. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll look to the clerk to see if, I don't see anyone in the audience. Well, I do, but Sue, do you wish to comment? Okay.
Thank you Chair Perry. We do have one individual outline. If the individual wishes to address the committee regarding this staff report, please press the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen.
Okay, thank you very much. So I will read in the recommendation that Report P 2025-25, Draft Plan of Subdivision Approval Extension Request, Huntingwood Trails West, 5 Silver Creek Drive, Town File, P L E D, P 2025 232, dated October 6, 2025, be received, and that the request for extension of draft approval for the plan of subdivision Huntingwood Trails West, P L E D, P 2025 232, including minor technical amendments to the associated conditions of draft plan approval as appended to this report, be approved for a period of three years with the expectation that the proponent will continue to progress expeditiously, sorry, toward registration, and that Report P 2025-25 be ratified by council on October 6, 2025 for the reasons outlined in this report. Can I have a mover? Counselor Jeffrey seconded Counselor McCulloch, and I'll open it to the floor. Counselor Jeffrey?
Uh, thank you Mr. Chair. I just appreciate staff's report. The only question I have is, if you reduced it to two years or one year, would it allow us to monitor that they're still expeditiously, expeditiously moving toward registration, as opposed to waiting for three years and going darn, they didn't?
Director Valentine?
Uh, thank you Chair, and through you to Counselor Jeffrey. That would be staff's typical response to a request of this nature. However, Senior Planner Tickle has outlined some extenuating circumstances, particularly in the care and control that's needed for the detailed design, given that the location is adjacent to some significant environmental and hazard features. And the applicant has certainly shown that they are continuing towards registration with two submissions over the past year or so that have been received by the town. In addition, we do have the applicant proactively lodging an Ontario Land Tribunal appeal. They are seeking three years. If council does elect a shorter time period, it is quite likely that they will seek to have that decision overturned by the tribunal.
Hold on.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Oh, okay. I'll call the matter to a vote. All those in favor, and that's unanimous. Thank you very much Director Valentine and Senior Planner Tickle. Okay, on item 15.3, Unregistered Deputations. I believe I don't have any. Oh, I'll wait for Counselor Doherty and Counselor Baines. Let's back on.
Thank you. And again, we do have one individual participating remotely. If they wish to address the Committee of the Whole regarding this open delegation, please press the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen. And it's all.
Okay, thank you.
However, I will note that I do see our BIA General Manager here is regarding a matter that's coming up in the, the next portion of the agenda. So if committee has leniency to listen to our General Manager potentially at that time, if we need her assistance, if she can be called upon, then we can just wait.
Good. To speak, yeah, okay. You're good? Okay, thank you. Okay, item 15.4, Reports Minutes of Other Committees and Boards. The recommendation is that the following minutes of other committees and boards be received, and the recommendations contained therein be approved. Minutes Trails and Active Transportation Advisory Committee, July 10th, 2025. Minutes Accessibility Advisory Committee, July 17th, 2025. Minutes OPP Detachment Board, July 17th, 2025. Minutes Downtown Collingwood BIA Board of Management, September 11th, 2025. And I believe Counselor Potts is going to speak on that after. Minutes Collingwood Public Library Board, June 2020, June 26, 2025. And the Minutes Museum Advisory Committee, September 18th, 2025. Can I have a mover? Deputy Mayor Friar, seconded by Counselor Doherty, and I believe Counselor, has anyone got any comments or questions on? No? Counselor Potts?
Thanks Chair Perry. In the last BIA meeting, it was brought for the BIA Boundary Expansion. At that point, General Manager Nicholson, who's with us today, provided the board with a sketch of the proposed expanded BIA Boundary. And the BIA Board of Management approved the recommended boundary expansion as presented. So at that point, at this point, both General Managers here currently, and I'll pass it over to the clerk for some more information for council on this.
Clerk Comus?
Certainly, thank you. You may have recalled during the last budget process through Chair Perry to the committee that the BIA had noted that part of their intentions for 2025 were to consider the expansion of their boundary. And maybe General Manager Nixon can speak to how many additional properties that is and what the realignment associates with. But the process is actually facilitated by the clerk. So once we received notice last week when we were including the information on the agenda package, we literally just received legal advice now. And our legal advice is that they do recommend that council provides their endorsement of the intention to proceed with the process. And then we do have to issue these notices. And of course, we're in a postal strike, so we're doing a courier delivery with the support of the BIA. And that has to go out this week to meet the, to meet the last meeting in December. So that last meeting in December will provide all the property owners and tenants that are responsible for paying portion of the levy to be able to comment and provide their feedback before it's considered, because you have to make the decision in the year prior before a new levy can take effect on the expanded boundary properties. So if you don't mind, I wouldn't mind.
No, I would like it too.
General Manager Nixon to come forward just to confirm how many properties it means. And then following receipt of the motion, we would be looking at rising from Committee of the Whole, doing a quick waving of the notice, and then just endorsing the intent to consider the expansion.
GM Nicholson?
Uh huh, thank you. This is not the first time, this is the third time that the BIA has expanded its boundaries. And this will bring our new boundary into alignment with what is designated as downtown commercial core in the official plan. As in background information, we were formed in 1977, and expansion was undertaken in 2004 to accommodate the natural growth primarily to the south end of the downtown. And then in 2015, an expansion was undertaken as the shipyard, at the previous expansion there, the shipyard was still in a holding pattern. And so when it became a commercial residential area, the expansion took in, took our boundaries right into the waterfront. This boundary expansion is a small one. It involves about five to six properties that are its own commercial in the area. It goes to the west. It takes in the Commercial Plaza adjacent to Starbucks. And then to the east, it takes in the commercial area right through to the courthouse. And there's a small, small property that's on Third Street that is just, is just, was a residential is now commercial, so it'll take in that. So it's a very small, small expansion compared to our previous ones. But it will, best practices through the province is that your BIA district should align itself with the downtown commercial core as designated in the official plan.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions of GM Nicholson? I do appreciate having this map too, because now I can picture it.
And visualize it.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, I didn't realize it was up. Thank you. And we'll be reaching out, I've already started reaching out to the property owners within the expanded district to ensure that they understand the impact and what the importance of, of, you know, bringing their properties in line with the, with the BIA and the work that we do. And we'll be looking, of course, at as we move forward with the expanded district, as we hope that it moves forward, that we will increase our decor and our, and our visibility in that, in those areas, so that both, both the east and west side of Huron and First Street, those, those additional properties become the gateway into the, into the downtown.
Okay. Counselor Doherty?
Uh, thank you. Just a question with regard to the map that we have in front of us. There's a small portion on the east side that's designated under the current boundary, but it's shown in green, and I'm just wondering what property that is.
That's the museum.
Of course, yes.
And they don't pay BI levy, but we love to have them. They're a great attraction.
Thank you. That was, that was my question.
Uh, any other comments or questions? I do have one myself. Have you, you said you've reached out through other means as far as feedback? Have you, any feedback you've got from businesses that are falling within this new expanded area?
The one major property owner, the courthouse redevelopment is, is very supportive of it. So it's a matter of sitting down with them and hopefully they will, they will support as well. So I'll be reaching out personally to them, and we'll be doing some general information sharing about what the process is.
Okay, great. Great news. Okay, I will call the, we don't have to pull that out, do we? Okay. So all the six items for the minutes, I'll call the, call the vote. All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you very much, GM Nicholson. Okay, moving on to, sorry.
Through the chair, just a process item. The clerk had mentioned that there would be a specific vote around endorsing moving forward with this investigation for future decision by council. And I don't, that's all coming up in the council rise. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Item 15.5, Older Deferred Business. No? Okay. Oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor Friar?
We had mentioned at the beginning with the agenda that Counselor-
that Counselor Potts wanted to raise a question about the Veterans Walk. And then I had forgot to mention that there were a couple of items that Counselor Jeffrey was.
Yeah, I didn't know if that was old deferred business or other business, because it.
Kind of in. I had said old, so, so you can just go ahead with it.
Okay, well, actually, we'll just cover them under older deferred business. Sorry. Counselor Potts?
Thanks, Chair Perry. I was just looking for an update from staff in regards to the, where we're at with the Veterans Crosswalk. And I'll let you go, and then I'll follow up after. Thanks.
Director Cubit?
Thank you. Through you, Chair Perry. Staff from the Culture and Events Division, including our museum staff, met with representatives from the Collingwood Legion to discuss the proposed Veterans Crosswalk. Those initial discussions included identifying a proposed, or the preferred location for the crosswalk, which is on a portion of Veterans Crescent. You just saw it in green. On the west side of the museum, and it would be connecting the museum and the Senataph. This proposed location is supported by the Legion and staff. We also discussed potential crosswalk design ideas. There are some really creative ideas at play, but we were working to determine the extent of creativity and customization that the thermoplastics application can actually accommodate. That is the recommended treatment for this type of project. So continuing to work with the Legion on that. The Legion's encouraging all veterans to provide their input on the project directly through their channels. And then staff will seek to do the same through our channels as the project unfolds and pending budget approval. So council can expect to see resource requests for this project brought forward during the twenty twenty six budget process.
Great, thank you. Counselor Potts?
Yeah, just to follow up. So, and thanks for the update. So what I'm hearing is that there's certain templates that we may not be able to accommodate. Like, so we couldn't make it specific to like the wants of the town of Collingwood or the Legion. It has to be a specific within a guideline of three templates or two templates. Is that what I'm hearing?
Director Cubit?
Through you to Counselor Potts. No, not necessarily. It's we can certainly customize a template. It's just the we can't, you can't hand paint. We couldn't. It's not sounding like we could bring in an artist to do like a hand painted design using that material. So we'd be limited to, you know, more block-like features. But it's not to say we can't customize it to Collingwood. It's, it's just the degree that, that it can get creative might not be as, as broad as we would have hoped originally.
And another follow up through you, Chair Perry. So, and I can appreciate that. The original motion, because I had put it on, and I do remember that there might have been some wording towards the budget. My concern at this point is two things. First of all, haven't been part of any budget process as of right now because of, of the new process with the, I guess, the Strongmare Powers and and I look at, in my wish list would have been something as far as having something completed for Remembrance Day, which is not far down the road. But, but I also, given that, I think with what's taken place in the last few months with the angst and uncertainty from members of the Legion, with the uproar of the the discussions of the Arts Center at that time, that I think this would be a potential way to mend fences in a lot of cases if we could get something going sooner than later. And if it's a small budget item, I don't know. Like, I don't know where the costs are at at this point, or if there's been any discussion of costs. But I think it's, I think the hope was to have something a lot sooner than later. And, and I'm hearing concern out there in the, in the public that it's not going to come to fruition, or it's going to be years down the road. So with a little bit of frustration. So that's why I wanted to hear the update to see where, where things were at. And the budget piece I am concerned about because as member of council, we haven't been part of any budget process yet, just to make sure that it is going to be in the budget on time. So.
Director Cubit?
Sure, through you. I can provide a little more insight. So my understanding is, you know, even if we got into the place where there is a, a design that the Legion is happy with that can be accommodated, to try to move it forward this year, as I understand, was part of the original motion, if possible. And I would maybe look to Director Alcoca to confirm, but my understanding is the budget wasn't necessarily there. And I will give you an idea that the base budget for this is about twenty five thousand dollars. That's without going out to an artist to help, you know, enhance this concept. So we, we were feeling pretty strongly that this would have to go to twenty twenty six. We have every intention of moving forward with it. Should it be approved by council, and certainly flagged it so that council sees it as part of the twenty twenty six budget requests. I think that's all I have to offer.
Cao?
I would just say that with respect to the budget process and council's input, we followed a very similar process to what we've used in previous years. And I don't know, I wasn't here for the last discussion on this piece. But typically around this time of year, we would bring forward the State of the Union as it is, the things like cost of living and CPI and and those types of pieces. This one won't be missed by the budget because it is referred by a resolution of council to the budget. And certainly if people have things that they want to make sure staff are, are aware of, we welcome you to let us know so that we'll make sure that things are incorporated beyond the resolutions, at least in the initial thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Friar?
Thank you. I was going to comment about the Veterans Walk. I'm not going to comment about the budget processes. That's another red herring. So I had hoped it would be ready for this year as well. But in listening to the explanation, I, I wasn't certain that I understood what the Legion would like to see happen. But it's significant enough that if it's carrying twenty five thousand dollars, at least, I think is what the director's saying. I would assume as well, it'd be pretty difficult then to get it done for November eleventh, even if we had it designed and everything right now, like.
Director Cubit?
Thank you. Through you, Chair Perry. That is, that is my belief. That's what I understand. I'm not sure if Public Works wants to chime in. This is obviously a, a joint project. But we're still, we're still working on the, the base design with the Legion. I would be guessing we, we wouldn't be able to accommodate that that quickly.
That's fine. That's all I was, that, that explanation is fine. I don't need anything more than that.
Wonderful. Counselor Ring?
Thank you very much, Chair Perry. Through you to Director Cubit. I know it's, it's, it's too late now, obviously, if, if this is the process. When the motion was made, I thought we were asking the Legion for a location. I don't, was it in the motion that they designed it to? Because that seems to be the sticking point right now. I mean, I know it's not cheap. I know when the Pride Crosswalk was done, I couldn't believe what it cost. And so I knew it wasn't going to be cheap. But I think the original motion, I'm just guessing off the top of my head, was at least July. I figured would give us enough time to put something together and at least have it for Remembrance Day. But if, I know it's not going to be now because it's too late now. But I mean, I just wondered why it's taken so long to get, we haven't even got a design yet. I'm just wondering. There's an explanation for that.
I believe, from what I heard, I believe it's still in discussion with the Legion, but maybe Director Cubit can add to that a bit more.
Thank you. Through you. Yes, I wish things moved a little quicker at times too, but it was our understanding that we would work with the Legion to at least ensure that they were endorsed a design. We never had an intention of just putting something in front of them. So we really welcomed, they came to us, our very first meeting, which was very quickly after that first motion came to the table. They had already had some really fantastic designs, which I, I'm sure I would wholeheartedly endorse if it could be accommodated with the actual treatment. So I'd like to think that they would be supportive of us continuing down this collaborative path, understanding it is taking extra time, but to arrive at a place where everyone is pleased with design. It feels meaningful and impactful and can also be installed appropriately for, for, you know, the longest span of time possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ring?
Just to follow up and, and through, just a comment, I guess. And I'm not saying that what was done was the wrong thing to do. I just wasn't aware of the designing being one of the things that's held it up this long. I just, I thought it was more they were going to suggest where they wanted it. And, and hopefully we could get it installed. I'm not criticizing for how long it's taken, other than I wasn't aware of how long it's going to take to even design something that's.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Potts?
Thanks, Chair Perry. And just very quick. So has it, and we talked about the veterans' drive. Is that, is that like a final decision on, on the location? Or was it just to kind of, because that's kind of part of the update to see if there has been a location identified that that's what we're going with. And then now we get into the design portion of it. And I do understand the timing of, of, of budget. So, so it's just as long as we can say, or we're confident to say, yes, we have a location in mind and, you know, coming through budget, we get budget approval, and then it would be something installed in twenty twenty six. I think it's just, I think it's just the communication piece for, because there are some members of the Legion that are, you know, in their later years that would be, would be loving to see this, you know, come to fruition before the end. So if any update, thanks.
Director Cubit?
Thank you. Through you, Chair Perry. It's our intention to return to council with both the budget implications and the proposed locations so that council can, can approve both.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Director Alcoca, I know your name was mentioned a couple of times, not to put you on the spot, but if you had anything to add to this before we close?
No, I think every question got answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. I believe Counselor Jeffrey now has a couple of old or deferred business items.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Director Alcoca managed to get to me with a thorough update this afternoon with respect to a traffic calming matter specific to a residence. So I don't need to ask about that again tonight. And, and also I received an update with respect to the speed limits around Central Park. And so I did get a response from the director that things are in the MMTP. But I was surprised that I would have to, we, whoever is concerned about Hamilton Street would have to wait till the completion of the MMTP because it's a direct link into the park. So I did send a follow up to the director, and he's probably not had time this afternoon with his schedule to look at that specific question. But I guess my next question in the stage under old deferred is why do I have to wait for the MMTP to have this considered and get Hamilton? Because Hamilton Street is going to be recommended, I believe, for thirty K in the MMTP. But why do we have to wait for that? If it was kind of, unless it's just because it got missed when we did all the parks and we can't go back and fix that? So that will be the question I'm waiting for now. So this has kind of gone two steps ahead since this afternoon. So there you go.
Thank you. Read my mind on Hamilton Street too. I just, I, I wonder why it doesn't fall within the hundred and fifty meters. But anyway, well, that's good. Thank you for looking after that. Counselor Potts?
Thanks, Chair Perry. I have a general question, and I don't know, I'll bring it up, may not be the appropriate time, but it just seems when we talk about the speed limits on streets, and it's like we're piecemealing a street here and a street there. And I've seen locally in the local media and petitions and stuff happening for, you know, other streets, we've, we've corrected traffic calming on this street. Now it's moved to the next one. And it seems like there's no end in sight when it comes to moving it. Where do we kind of? I know there's the transportation plan coming, but at what point do we kind of put a cap on this to say like, like, I don't, because we get, I get correspondence all the time about, you know, you fixed it here, but now it's worse here. And I just find that we're chasing the tail of a squirrel on this stuff, and it just doesn't seem to.
Townwide speed limit?
I mean, yeah, but when does that, I mean, how long do we wait? And when do we get there?
Director Alcoca, do you wish to comment?
Thank you, Chair. Through you to Counsel Potts. We are working very hard on getting the master transportation plan in front of council. It will give a lot of answers to our plan for the future. I agree with you that sometimes we're trying to push things in piecemeal ahead of an overall plan. However, that's, you probably noticed in a lot of my replies, they were saying we need to bring it back and channel it through the MMTP to ensure that we're not taking an isolated action and we keep it within the plan. So I'm hoping as we bring the MMTP forward that it will cut down a lot on these requests or show better, better integration of the streets. And if there is gaps, and that's why we have, we have a, a long period of commenting to get all the inputs from the community to ensure that we haven't missed any portion of their concern that we can implement in the plan.
Thank you. Counselor Potts?
Yeah, just a quick follow up. It's because it's getting, and I appreciate that. But it's getting quite tiresome and frustrating from my perspective. I'm wearing the old, you know, it's not an excuse, but we have to wait for the, you know, the, the master of transportation plan. And it just seems like from the perceivable that's coming back is we're just trying to cover up something that we don't want to deal with. And I think it's, it's getting to a point where I'm hoping that we get something back sooner than later or quicker than possible because it just, it seems to be each week there's a new street and we're just kind of, it seems like we're not accomplishing anything. And I do recognize that there is a plan coming back, but hopefully, hopefully we can rectify it in the very near future and get moving on it because it's, it just seems that, you know, it's, as, as the community is escalating in frustration over traffic calming and speeds and stuff like that, we're just, it just, it doesn't feel like we're getting anywhere. And that's nothing to staff. It's, I understand things take time, but from our perspective or mine, it's frustrating. So I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Director Alcoca?
I, I understand your situation. I appreciate your frustration. We really need to do it right so we don't come back and amend and instead just because we rushed everything or did not complete the work for the sake of putting something in front of council. I want to put this in front of council and it can be satisfactory and we can adopt it and move on.
I'm just wondering if any of this falls under the speed study that's going on as well. Cao?
Yes, but Director Alcoca has the speed study work nearing completion and will, I believe, be bringing it forward as part of the MMTP Incorporated together.
Okay, thank you. That, that may answer some of your questions, Counselor Potts, when that comes out, hopefully. So. Any other old or deferred business? No? Okay, we'll move on to item fifteen point six point one, AMO Board of Directors Meeting Update. Counselor Doherty?
Thank you very much, Chair. The AMO Executive Committee of the Whole and Board of Directors meetings were held last week. And these were the first, actually, under the helm of the new Executive Director, Lindsay Jones, who was the former Director of Policy. And she's replaced Brian Rosborough, who retired at the end of August. The, we had a quick report on the conference. It was highly successful. There were thirty four hundred delegates, which is a record number of delegates, also a record number of exhibitors in the exhibitor hall. And overall, anyone who was there will agree that we were busting at the seams. And, but it was, the feedback has been very, very positive from delegates. Our, there was a number of fairly significant matters that were on the agenda. The first was Bill Nine, the Municipal Accountability Act, which now has been referred to third reading in the provincial legislature without two changes that AMO had asked for. Number one being that the removal of office vote be adjusted from unanimous only to two thirds of council to approve a removal of an office, of a member of council. And secondly, the legislation should have included a progressive range of discipline options for integrity commissioners to consider somewhat aligned with the Educational Act. AMO's assumption is that Bill Nine will be passed in the legislature. AMO's assumption is that Bill 9 will be passed in the legislature, but the regulations will be enacted under a new ethical framework that AMO will have the ability to feedback on and hopefully shape. And one of those would be the addition of new conflict of interest items, improper use of influence, political and election activities, and respect for the code of conduct. And AMO will also be making recommendations, including a role for a municipal integrity, integrity commissioner and their relationship with the Ontario Integrity Commissioner, qualifications of the IC, the process, reasonableness of fees for complaints and suggested timelines for resolutions of appeals. Next item was automated speed enforcement. On September 9th, the Premier Ford publicly commented on the municipal use of automated speed enforcement, suggesting the provincial government would step in to prohibit the use of speed cameras. AMO wrote a letter to the premier stressing that ASE is making roads safer, is cost-effective, and is supported by a majority of the Ontario public and police service organizations. AMO's concerns are also jurisdictional, this being yet another demonstration of the province overreaching into municipal jurisdiction. So AMO has requested a meeting with the Minister of Transportation. Although AMO does emphatically support the use of ASEs, it's acknowledged that there, there may be a path toward finding some improvements to the program that would be to the approval of the, the province, the premier's office, and municipalities. And this would include things like standardizing ticket thresholds so that you wouldn't have tickets being issued for, you know, less than 10 kilometers over the limit. As an example, more clearly defined community safety zones and regulatory requirements to ensure that revenues generated from ASEs are directed specifically toward public safety and road safety initiatives. The Building Canada Homes announcement, the AMO President and Executive Director were invited to attend the announcement of Building Canada Homes. AMO was the only municipal association outside of FCM to be in attendance. Building Canada Homes will have an initial investment of $13 billion to focus primarily on non-market housing, including a billion for supportive and transitional housing and a commitment to work with the province to pair these federal investments with wraparound employment and healthcare supports for persons experiencing homelessness. Also, $1.5 billion has been allocated to the Canada Rental Protection Fund to acquire at-risk apartment buildings and to protect existing affordable rental housing. And there were a number of other recommendations, but overall, AMO staff will continue to work with the federal officials to ensure a detailed program design reflects the unique role of Ontario municipal service managers in housing. The federal government has also weighed in on the notion of development charges and they have made a commitment to reduce municipal DCs on multi-unit residential housing projects by 50%. This is of concern for AMO, although the feds have indicated that the cost would be some $6 billion over four years to offset municipal losses. The estimated revenue loss is actually closer to $8 to $12 billion to municipalities. So AMO has written to Minister Robertson asking that the lost DC revenue be replaced with equally predictable and sufficient revenue and should be provided outside of existing federal funding envelopes like the CCBF. Feds have also weighed in on taxes on housing. In the spring, they eliminated the federal portion of the HST for first-time home buyers of newly constructed homes of a value of under $1 million. And there has been a growing developer and pundit advocacy for federal and provincial governments to expand the rebate, calling to remove the HST on all new homes. However, these measures may reduce the cost of building a new home, but there's no guarantee that the savings will be passed on to home buyers. So on the position of AMO is that it is counterproductive to advocate for more sales tax cuts, which would reduce the revenues needed for new infrastructure investments to create new housing. So AMO does not support calls to expand the federal HST rebate for newly constructed And at the AMO Conference, Minister Flack indicated that he will consult to extend and improve the Building Faster Fund that is currently set to end at the end of 2026. Overall, the Building Faster Fund really is not working as intended. Ontario built only 75% of its housing targets and less than half of the municipalities that had been given housing targets were able to achieve their targets. AMO also had to advocate for 10% of that fund to be assigned to rural, small, and northern municipalities. The current infrastructure funding approach is failing to address the housing crisis or to deliver the conditions for long-term prosperity. AMO's view is that action is needed to more efficiently and effectively use provincial funds to facilitate housing construction across Ontario. So in the short term, AMO recommends eligibility criteria be broadened to reflect market conditions with lower housing targets and waiting for other metrics. And in the medium term, AMO calls on the province to replace the Building Faster Fund with a long-term predictable and substantial infrastructure fund. AMO also undertook a health survey finding, or health survey of how much fund, how much municipal funding was being allocated to public health services and hospitals, et cetera. 89% of the Ontario's population was represented in the data that has been collected. Findings indicate that municipalities spent some $3.3 billion in operating and capital in the past year and an additional $375 million in local share for hospital redevelopment over the past five years. So it's been recommended that the province fund their legislated cost-sharing commitments and ensure funding is sufficient to meet provincially mandated standards. It has also been recommended that the province reexamine the local share hospital capital calculation methodology to better reflect the limited fiscal capacity of municipalities. This is particularly true for small urbans like ourselves, who are facing 10% local share in our own hospital redevelopment. And so certainly it's a matter that we will feel most significantly here unless some adjustments are made. And there was also an update on the blue box transition, but that's actually something that I just spoke to earlier. So that is my report. If there are any questions from yourself or members of council, we'd be happy to answer them.
Well, thanks for the very detailed update. Counselor Doherty, any comments or questions? Nope. Okay, all right, on to item 15.7.1. Notice of motions, automatic, automated speed enforcement. And since your voice is fully warmed up, I will let you read that in. Counselor Doherty?
Thank you, Chair. So this is a motion that AMO has provided to municipalities and is asking to send their support. So whereas ensuring the safety of all road users, including drivers, cyclists, and pedestrians is a common priority for all municipalities and the provincial government, and whereas reducing vehicle speeds helps create calmer, safer neighborhoods that encourage people to use active forms of transportation and to be active in their communities. Whereas municipalities across Ontario are increasingly adopting provincially regulated automated speed enforcement or ASE programs as a proven tool to improve road safety, particularly in school zones and community safety zones. And whereas in Toronto, speed cameras have reduced the number of speeding vehicles by 45% across 250 urban school zones, including an 88% decrease in vehicles traveling more than 20 kilometers over the speed limit. And other municipalities with ASE are seeing similar significant speed reduction data. And whereas Ontario's police leaders view ASE not as a revenue tool, but as a traffic safety tool with the purpose of deterrence and prevention, helping to change driver behavior and reduce collisions. And whereas by complementing traditional police enforcement, ASE frees up police resources to focus on other pressing public safety priorities. And whereas municipalities are best placed to develop transportation plans based on their local knowledge and community input. And whereas the varying approach across municipalities present an opportunity to promote consistency and alignment with emerging best practices province-wide, therefore be it resolved that the Province of Ontario, through the Ministry of Transportation, work collaboratively with municipalities operating ASEs or intending to install them, along with the Association of Municipalities of Ontario to develop improvements to the ASE program. And further, that a copy of this motion be sent to Premier Doug Ford, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, Robert Flack, Minister of Transportation, Prabhne Sakaria, and MPP Brian Saunderson, and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. So I'll bring that forward at our next meeting of council.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Doherty. Counselor Jeffrey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I won't make you endure the preambles, but I'll just go right to the operatives. Now, therefore be it resolved that the council of the town of Callingwood supports the elect respect pledge and commits to: treat others with respect in all spaces, public, private, and online; reject and call out harassment, abuse, and personal attacks; focus debate on ideas and policies, not personal attacks; help build a supportive culture where people of all backgrounds feel safe to run for in old office; call on relevant authorities to ensure the protection of elected officials who face abuse or threats; and model integrity and respect by holding one another to the highest standards of conduct. And be it further resolved that the town of Callingwood council calls on elected officials, organizations, and community members to support the Elect Respect campaign and sign the online page pledge at www.electrespect.ca. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, MP Terry Dowdell, MPP Brian Saunderson, the Callingwood Ontario Provincial Police Detachment, and the Callingwood OPP Detachment Board.
Thank you, Counselor Jeffrey. Any other notice of motions? Nope. Okay, so I'll move on to item 15.8.1. Motion to rise from Committee of the Whole, the recommendation that council herein rise from Committee of the Whole and return to the regular council meeting. Can I have a mover? Counselor Ring, seconded by Counselor McCullough. All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Deputy Mayor Fryer, do you want to change positions or just stay where we are?
I think we're fine.
Okay.
So thank you, Chair Perry. And coming out of that, we do have 16.1, which is, it's a ratified committee of the whole recommendation on Huntington Wood Trails West as follows. Recommendation that report P 2025-25, draft plan of subdivision approval extension request Huntington Wood Trails West, 5 Silver Creek Drive, town file PLED P 2025232 dated October 6, 2025 be received. And that the request for extension of draft approval for the plan of subdivision, Huntington Wood Trails West, PLED P 2025232, including minor technical amendments to the associated conditions of draft plan approval, as appended to this report, be approved for a period of three years with the expectation that the proponent will continue to progress expeditiously towards registration. And I would ask for a mover? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. And Counselor Baines, we will turn off your camera for a short period. And I'll look for a mover. We have Counselor Perry and Counselor Ring. And any comments in regards to the matter? Not seeing any. We will call that matter to a vote. All in favor? And that's carried unanimously. And we'll ask Counselor Doherty to return, if she would. And we can turn camera on for Counselor Baines. So we do have the matter of the BIA and the boundary expansion. And Clerk Thomas, do you have a motion that you can display for us?
Thank you, Chair Fryer. I do have a motion. We will have to pass a motion to waive the appropriate notice that will require two-thirds first. And then if that passes, I can place the motion up on the screen. And again, just a reminder that if the motion to waive notice is not approved by two-thirds, then this will not be able to take effect for the 2026 year.
Okay, so I'd look first then for a mover and a secondary in regards to voting on waiving motion. And we have Counselor Potts and we have Counselor Perry. And I will call that to a vote then on waiving. And that is unanimous. So we will proceed now with suggested wording of a, of a motion by Clerk Thomas. And if you could bring that up on the screen, that would be great. So reading that council endorsed the request of downtown Callingwood BIA Board of Management to proceed with the intention to expand the existing BIA boundaries and that staff be directed to initiate the required notice process in accordance with the municipal act. And further that, subject to the fulfillment of the legislative requirements and criteria for BIA boundary expansions, a bylaw to amend the BIA boundaries be brought forward for council's consideration at its first final meeting in December to become effective for 2026. And Counselor Potts will, will move that as it's, as it's reading now. And Counselor Jeffrey will second it and I'll open it up for discussion. Don't see anyone wanting to discuss, so I'm ready to call that to a vote then. All those in favor? And that's unanimous. And then we move to confirmatory bylaw. And that, that bylaw, number 2025-074, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the regular meeting of council held September 22nd, 2025, and October 6, 2025, be enacted and passed the sixth day of October 2025. And a mover and a secondary? And a mover and a secondary, Councillor McCullough and Councillor Doherty, call that matter to a vote. I probably ignored you on all the seconds and motions. Councillor Baines, sorry about that. All in favor? And that's passed unanimously. And Councillor Baines, would you like to put the motion forward to adjourn? So put forward, and we will call that matter to a vote, and that's unanimous. Thank you.